Welcome to order and welcome everyone. Councilmember Holcomb is going to be running a little bit behind. The Virginia Sheriff's Association is in town. And but if it's once again, if it's okay, we can go ahead and get going with the council briefings. And the first one is the public health update.
Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Dr. Padati will come and give council an update on some of the recent trends we've been seeing regarding COVID-19 and best practices that we can do to keep everybody safe in the community.
I don't, I was just gonna talk. I hope that's okay.
Oh, that's great. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me. It's wonderful to see you all. I was just gonna talk with you through some updates on COVID-19 activity and the updated COVID-19 seasonal vaccine today. So as I get started, you're kind of hearing me say things like activity and seasonal vaccine. And those terms or those words are probably gonna feel familiar and a lot like flu. And they should, right? Because those are the words we use to talk about flu virus activity and seasonal flu vaccines. Now increasingly, you can start to think about COVID-19 like flu. And I don't mean at all to minimize COVID-19, right? There are still some important differences. But I think there are actually some really good lessons learned and precedents that we have in flu that can help us with COVID as we think about it now and moving forward. I do want to highlight, though, one of the key differences between flu and COVID that we continue to keep in mind is the concern about some of the long-term symptoms that some people have when they get COVID. So we know that there are some people who experience symptoms, things that can impact their hearts, lungs, brain after getting an infection. And the full understanding or impact of those longer-term symptoms is still unknown, right? We don't know exactly what that means or why some people experience that and others don't. And I mention that because that's one of the really important reasons why we want to encourage everybody to continue to take advantage of this updated seasonal COVID vaccine. Even if you've had COVID in the past, it's going to be important to continue to get that seasonal protection. So before I go too far into the updated vaccine, again, I just wanted to give you a little bit of a briefing around what we're seeing with COVID-19 activity. Now, when we've talked about COVID-19 activity over the last several years, I'm sure you've gotten used to and heard changes in the way we've done that, right? So in the very beginning, we talked about number of cases. Then we talked a lot about things like percent positivity. And those are all helpful things. But as we've started to see COVID-19 evolve, we talk more about the kinds of metrics or measures that we often talk about in flu. So those include things like hospitalizations and things like what we call syndromic surveillance. So what that means is while we still look for reports of tests and actual diagnoses of COVID, we recognize that there are things that have changed, right? Like at-home testing that doesn't always get reported to public health. And so because of that, we increasingly think about COVID-19 activity in a broader way. So even when we don't have necessarily a lab diagnosis, because maybe some people are testing at home, or maybe they're staying home and not going into healthcare at all, we can look at other measures, things that give us some insight into activity to tell us, is it high? Is it low? Is it increasing? Is it decreasing? That sort of thing. And all of those terms, right? And all of that language, again, should sound really familiar. That's increasingly, you know, how we're looking at COVID. And that's how we've looked at flu for many, many decades. And that makes sense for a respiratory virus, right? You know, that's kind of how they move and interact between us very seasonally. And we look at measures that can help us understand, is there a lot of flu? Is there not a lot of flu? And what can we do about it? So again, you may all have experienced this in your personal lives or hearing it from our community, but we have seen a recent increase in COVID-19 activity. Now, that is, the activity we're seeing is still well below the peak that we saw in January 2021. And in fact, according to CDC measures, our hospitalizations are still at a low level. But we have seen increased activity. And that probably doesn't surprise us, right? Because again, when we think about the way that other respiratory viruses, including other coronaviruses in that family that COVID-19 comes from, we know that they behave in a seasonal pattern. We tend to see increases around fall, over winter, opportunities where maybe we're going back to school, maybe we're interacting with each other more, maybe we're indoors more over the winter or traveling and celebrating holidays, that sorts of thing. So again, the epidemiologic pattern that we're seeing with COVID increasing is consistent with what we've seen with respiratory viruses in the past. Now, we know that we're seeing that again, as I mentioned, because we still do look at a few measures that are important and helpful. So one of those is hospitalization rates. And so we have seen a little bit of an increase over the last month in hospitalization rates at the national, state, and local level. So right now, at the national level, or as of about a week ago, we're seeing 5.25 admissions per 100,000 residents for hospitalization due to COVID. In Virginia, we're at 4.06 statewide per 100,000 residents. And here in Virginia Beach, we're at about 4.9 admissions per 100,000 residents. So again, what that tells you is we're maybe a little bit below the nation, maybe a little bit above the state, but around where other people are in terms of what we're seeing nationwide with hospitalizations. Now, this number, again, is still classified by the CDC as low, but it has increased over the last month. Now, as I mentioned, we look at other measures, too. Some of those things like syndromic surveillance, so things where somebody may present with symptoms that sound like COVID, but they didn't get a COVID test or diagnosis. We call that COVID-like illness. We can also look at diagnoses in the ER. And again, not everybody goes to an ER for a diagnosis. So no one single measure that I'm talking about here is going to be perfect or comprehensive. They're all taken together to kind of give us clues and insight into activity. So just like hospitalizations, those rates of COVID-like illness and the diagnoses in emergency departments have increased over the last month. So we're seeing about 4.3% of COVID-like illness and about 1.25% of diagnoses in emergency rooms. Now, again, that's well below where we were in that peak of January 2021. As a reminder, for that January peak, we were at 41.6%, so that's compared to 4.3% of COVID-like illness. And we were at 9.64% of diagnoses compared to that 1.25%. And again, I know it can feel a little hard to compare those numbers. And that makes sense, right? Because again, no one single number is going to be perfect or totally comprehensive. But taken together, what they're telling us is we've seen some increased activity during the last month. We're still far below where we were at prior peaks. But we know that this virus is circulating and it's picking up in our community. So we would call this sustained mild growth, you know, taken altogether. So in addition to looking at those kinds of measures around people seeking care in hospitals or emergency rooms, the other thing that we do for COVID and that we've done for flu for many years, right, is follow strains or variants. And so again, we've taken a look at the circulating strains of COVID. And I'm sure you all are hearing about this, you know, in the news and in other places as well. But we do have a strain that's circulating of COVID, and it's referred to as EG5 or ARIS. So this is quickly becoming the most popular or most commonly circulating strain or variant of COVID. Now, it's important for us to keep an eye on that. It helps us understand the activity of the virus. And it also helps us keep an eye out for looking for efficacy of the treatments and vaccines that we have. And I'll get to it in a little bit to talk a little bit more about the updated seasonal vaccine. But this is one of the ways that we help inform updates to those seasonal vaccines. And again, that's going to sound really familiar and a lot like flu, right? Every year, we talk about which strains of flu have been circulating. Flu can change a little bit as it moves between us, right? It's got some proteins on its surface that can adapt and adjust. And as it moves around the world throughout its season, it changes a little. And so each year, we update that vaccine to provide a new seasonal flu vaccine to protect people. And that's the same thing we're talking about here for COVID, right? As COVID moves around the world and moves through us into this seasonal pattern, there are some changes. And so providing an updated vaccine is a really good way to help remind the immune system how to fight this virus and keep people safe. So that altogether is kind of the lay of the land in terms of COVID virus activity. Now, the good news is, again, we're seeing some increase. It's below where we were at our peaks, but we know it's around and increasing. But we have great tools that can fight it, right? We have things that we know we can do to help protect people. So chief among them, of course, is that updated seasonal vaccine. And I'll talk more about that here in a moment. But we have other good public health tools, too, right? We have things like practicing frequent hand washing. We also have things like, when you feel sick, please stay home, right? Whether that's for COVID or any other illness. And then we also just have reminders for people, if you have gotten COVID, if you are sick with COVID, to stay home for that five-day period. And that you can do things like wear a mask to help reduce droplet spread from you to other people. So a lot of good tools that we have available for us, including treatment tools. So therapeutics, if somebody does get sick with COVID, that they can work with their healthcare provider on those antivirals that have been out for a while now. So before I move into talking about the updated seasonal vaccine, any questions generally about COVID activity or where we're at with that?
Any questions?
Great.
The new vaccine is available.
You got it. That's the, that's the punchline.
Yes, the vaccine is available. I signed up for appointment today.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have some insider information on the hospitals. And I know Beach General has about 10 or 11 case picking up.
You got it. That is the bottom line. So thank you. That is it, right? So there is an updated seasonal vaccine. It is available. So the thing that's a little new and different, I would say now, again, in addition to starting to talk about a seasonal vaccine, the way that we do for flu, this vaccine has also been what we call commercialized. So you may hear people talking about the commercialization of the COVID vaccine. Now, when we say that, what we mean is it's taking the same pathways for distribution and for access that the other vaccines that we take do. So all we mean when we say commercialization is that now this vaccine is provided just the same way that your flu vaccine or other kinds of vaccines are. And so you are absolutely right. You know, thank you. That means that now you can access that through your healthcare provider. You can also access it through places like CVS and Walgreens. And there will be the same sort of traditional insurance evaluation, you know, and payments that are done for flu or, you know, all kinds of other vaccines that we provide for people. Yeah, please.
You just mentioned one of mine was cost.
Yeah.
Because I wonder about that.
Yep.
Flu and this.
Yep.
People talk about RSV and other ones. And they be taken in conjunction or is it preferred, the COVID before the flu or the flu before the COVID?
Fantastic question. So glad you asked it. They can be taken at the same time. So for a lot of people, it is just easier to make that one appointment and get them done. That's what I did last year. That's what I'll be doing this year. A flu and a COVID, you know, and your arm's a little sore.
Mark a reader.
There you go, right? That's right. The vaccination dance.
I was speaking as someone who, they lost my shot records on my way overseas, and I had to get them all at once.
I'm so sorry.
That's a bad situation.
I'm sorry to hear that. That is a lot. No, this is, you know, you know, it's absolutely fine to get both of them together. And it's much easier for some people to just make that one appointment. It's also okay to do it one at a time if that's what somebody prefers. But for a lot of people, including myself, it's just easier to make the one appointment and go ahead and do it. And there's no reason why you can't. Your immune system is perfectly capable of having both responses so that you can get protected and go on about your way. And this is actually a good time to do that. So a lot of times I'll get asked, well, when's the best time to get my flu vaccine in particular, right? And often, we talk about sort of end of September, early October being that sweet spot, because you want to try and get it before you're doing too much traveling, before there's too many gatherings, before activity really increases. Because the goal is you'll give your immune system about two weeks to build that response so that you're protected if you do get exposed. So this is a great time, and the updated vaccine is available now for people to make those appointments and go out and get both of those vaccines.
Hey, everybody. Chris and then Jennifer. Thank you for coming today. We do have a good-sized group of our population that we would some call anti-vax or they don't want to get vaccines. And I have young children in school. Can you share some things parents can do if they are in that group that does not want to get a vaccine? Because we are talking to, you know, both sides.
Yeah, you know, I, whenever, as a pediatrician and as a public health professional, whenever anybody has questions about a recommended point of care, you know, medicine or preventive tool like a vaccine, I think that's great. We should have questions about the care we receive and the things that we do for ourselves and for our children. So I think first and foremost, what I would say is that anybody who has questions or who has concerns, we really do encourage them to reach out to their pediatrician, to their primary care provider, excuse me, or to public health. And that we're happy to talk through questions or concerns. Because sometimes people need to have some questions addressed or, you know, maybe need to talk through some information that they've seen and that they're not sure about. And those are things we are happy to do. You know, I think it's also hard for people when you talk about the idea of taking a vaccine to prevent something that hasn't happened yet, right? Some people might say, well, I'm not sick. Why would I do something that will make my shoulder a little sore, right? And that's a fair question. And the reason, you know, there's a couple of reasons. You know, they include things like bringing down overall activity for our community, right? Protecting the people who have, you know, underlying health conditions and who are at more risk of serious illness or death who live in our community, right? Maybe those are our grandparents or people we know who are immunocompromised. But there's also, of course, direct benefits to, you know, me, the person who takes a shot, right? It helps protect me from getting sick. And certainly, nobody wants to get sick. Nobody wants, you know, to have to take time off work or that sort of thing. But even more important, as I mentioned at the beginning, in particular for COVID, we do see that there are some people who are developing some secondary symptoms from COVID infection. We don't exactly know why that happens, and we don't exactly know who that's going to happen for or how long those things last. But we're seeing things like symptoms with our brains, hearts, and lung that can be lasting. And so to prevent that from happening, right? The very best thing people can do is take advantage of this updated seasonal vaccine.
Thank you. Okay, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor. So you mentioned that the COVID vaccine is now becoming commercialized, so people can access it through their primary care providers or wherever else they may get their vaccinations. Is there a cost barrier? So for individuals who may not have insurance or preventive insurance, what are the options for them?
Yep. Thank you for asking that. So for people who do have insurance, again, the way that they'll access this will look very similar to how they would access flu or other recommended vaccines. For children who are uninsured, they can access this through the program that we have for other vaccines for children in that circumstance, which is the Vaccines for Children program. So that's a program that some pediatricians' offices will take advantage of. It's a program that we have at the Health Department. And so children who are uninsured will be able to access this vaccine by appointment through us, through the Health Department, bless you, you know, through that VFC program. Now, for adults who are uninsured, the CDC has created and announced what they're calling a Bridge to Access program. So coverage for individuals who are uninsured and would not otherwise be able to access this updated seasonal vaccine. Again, the Health Department will be a provider for Bridge to Access, so you'll be able to make those appointments by calling us. But we're not the only ones. There are other providers in the community who will do that, as well as larger chains that will be doing that. And so to find out who's doing that, people can visit vaccinate.gov to figure out where they can go for those appointments. But that Bridge to Access program will be providing coverage for people who are uninsured.
What's the coverage for children?
VFC, Vaccines for Children.
Anyone else at this point?
Thank you. So you all asked great questions, and you covered what I was about to dive into related to the new vaccine. So I wanted to make sure that I explained for you all that, again, this is an updated seasonal vaccine. So this is a vaccine that was designed based on the circulating strains at the time, so closer to that XBB 1.5. We do still think it will have good coverage for other circulating strains that are around now. Again, similar to flu, the goal is that you'll remind your immune system, oh, yeah, here's how you fight this. Here's what you need to do if you see this virus, right? So it's been updated. It's similar in profile and in side effects to the previous mRNA vaccines that were released. And as I mentioned, and thank you for asking the question about access, you know, access for individuals, again, who are insured will be through their provider or through, you know, larger pharmacies. And for individuals, children who are uninsured will be through that VFC program. And for adults who are uninsured will be through that Bridge to Access program. And there will be providers in the community who participate in those, and the Health Department is one of them, as I mentioned. And so you can call us to make an appointment. We'll be providing those vaccines by appointment at the Health Department.
Oh. If you guys, if you got a, wonderful report, please, whatever you need.
Yeah, thank you. You know, that was really it. Just wanted to make sure that we had briefed you all on the current virus activity and the options and opportunities for getting vaccinated. And again, so glad to hear that you've already got an appointment scheduled. You know, we are encouraging everybody, you know, to take advantage of this great tool. It's going to help protect us, keep us healthy. And please, anybody who has questions, don't hesitate to reach out to Public Health.
And thanks for the wonderful work you do to protect our city.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a great team, and we've got a great community, so it is a pleasure, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, next point, we'll move on to flood protection program and capital improvement update.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, have the staff and our oversight, the oversight for flood protection program. Give an update on the flood protection program and also the, and the capital improvement update.
Welcome.
Hello, how are you? This is the fastest two minutes of the council meeting. I'm Jeff Waller, chairman of the Flood Prevention Bond Referendum Oversight Board. The bond referendum included 21 projects in seven master projects, along with 10 support projects and 10 other active projects. The resolution creating the board calls for a report from the board to city council every three months. Last one was in June, so it's time for this one. Since the last report, the board has received staff briefings on the Lake Windsor Tide Gate project under construction, which you can see if you drive up and down 264, Big Red Crane. We took a field trip to, with Public Works operations to the Rosemont Forest Stormwater Pump Station. And actually, in August 2011, Public Works came to the council because that pump station was under construction when Hurricane Irene came into town. And our contractor worked through the whole hurricane, making the pump station run, and Rosemont Forest stayed dry, which it was supposed to do. So that was a good day. And we also received a briefing on the stormwater master planning. We've submitted our annual report since we last got together. In the August status report, the following construction activities are listed. Windsor Woods Tide Gate that I just talked about. The Bow Creek Stormwater Park Phase 1 has started construction. And this is noteworthy because that's the first referendum project that's gone into Lake Bradford dredging, South Plaza Trail Presidential Boulevard, and also Old Forge Road and Red Line Road, both of those are in the Windsor Woods area. Two completed projects are the Cape Henry Canal Gravity Sewer Relocation and Pleasure House Lake Outfall. Future activities are briefings on the Southern River Master Plan and then, months and months away, a briefing on the Central Resort District Master Plan. And we look for more field trips, like through the tide gates at Lake Windsor and also Bow Creek Stormwater Park. We have some requests of city council. We'd like to make use of the city's media and communication group to make available, increase public awareness by having maybe videos of things like pump station, like the Rosemont Forest Pump Station. Rosemont Forest Pump Station, the water pumps into a head tank. So if you stand at top and look, you get to see what 70 CFS of water looks like, which most people can't, you can't comprehend until you see it. We will advise city council people at our monthly meetings, we have updates on different things. And if we're updating something in your district, we'll make sure you know about it. So if you want to attend our briefing, you can. There's a lot of community meetings. Sometimes flood prevention projects are included. And if they are, we can work with city staff to make sure that those are covered. And now, this is a big one. Early in October, the city attorney's office is going to present a resolution to the city council so that we can add two non-voting student members from the school system's environmental studies program onto the board. So I think they've been included in other city boards, so we're looking forward to that. The city has received $24 million in state and federal grants and has applied for another $55 million. Our meeting's open to the public, 2:00 PM, the second Thursday of every month in Town Center. We have a website available through the Ripple Effect website. Our email address is posted there and available for comment. And all the members of the board remain looking forward to being a part of this bond referendum Any questions?
Michael, and then Wirth.
Mr. Waller, it's nice to see you. Thanks for all your work and for the work of the committee and for your presentation. It's very exciting to me because it feels like a District 3 flood protection program update. And just like you were describing, I've been sharing kind of some updates and information about the really robust projects that are happening around the Windsor Woods area, San Plaza area. People are really happy about it. They're really, I think, thrilled to see finally, you know, shovels in the ground and dirt moving and the infrastructure coming in. And I think that segue is nice to your point, and I just want to express support for an enhanced kind of media and communications approach to sharing that information. You know, there's lots of creative minds in that office, and I think people would really be happy to know where their investment is, is going and how it's going and what impact it's going to have for their neighborhood and for our community as a whole. So I think you really bring up a great point there that I support wholeheartedly, and I thank you for really advocating for that position. Because people like knowing what's going on. They like seeing what's going on, and they want to know what impact it will have on our neighborhood.
Okay. Well, and, well, hopefully it'll stay that way, because Windsor Woods, there's going to be a lot of stuff going on for a lot of years, and hopefully the residents can keep that end in sight and remain happy.
Great. Anyone else? Wirth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Waller, for your effort on the service site committee, which is really important and happy to participate. I just recommend to my colleagues that in my August 10th committee meeting, Mr. Hanson and his staff spoke to the Central Resort flooding mitigation program there. And a lot of people listening came just to hear just that. So I recommend that you invite Public Works to address any projects in your respective districts. And I also look forward to supporting the ordinance to invite students to join the oversight board.
Yeah, very well said. Anyone else? You know, I think it's very important. I think, you know, having periodic updates, you know, is really critical, especially to let people know that we're working in all the districts. And, you know, the challenges that we have, I believe, our initial bomb referendum in excess of, you know, $500 million. And Mr. Dahany, I understand that we're up talking 900, you know, with the inflation now. But I think it's important that we remain committed and vigilant and, you know, keep it go, you know, keep on course. and, you know, keep on course.
Mr. Mayor, those are good points. And the next presentation will be provided by the program manager, Alicia Pika. And she'll give council more updates in what we're seeing in terms of pricing for the bond referendum and also some ideas on how best we can articulate the cost to council and the public.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming and thanks for what you're doing.
You're welcome.
Well, good afternoon. It's great to see you guys again from our quarterly update. I'm here to give you that. Where am I pointing to the right place? Just go ahead and advance that for me, Tony. So it's been a busy quarter. On this slide, you can see all the different activities that have happened just since I last spoke with you in June. We've had a couple key procurements. You heard Mr. Waller talk about the Windsor Woods program and that mini project. So we've selected the design-build contractor for that last Friday. So that's going to be starting to get involved and getting a lot more progressing into the design phase. We're also in the process of selecting an owner's rep for the West Creek area. But you can see a whole bunch of projects have been progressing through the various design phases. So they've gone from 30% design to 60 to 90, all the way to 100. So there's a lot of work going on with this program with all the projects, which is a great thing. We had two construction starts last quarter. We started some work out on Old Forge Road and Red Lion. And then we also started, you saw that one picture on Mr. Waller's slide, the Bow Creek Park Stormwater Park. And we finished two projects. So we finished work at the Cape Henry Canal Gravity Sewer Relocation Project. And we also finished work up at the Lake Pleasure House Outfall. So there's been a lot of work, and we're going to continue this pace. And it'll be more evident as the program matures over the next couple of years. There'll be a lot more visibility to the public on how we're doing. Next slide. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this slide. Mr. Waller kind of told you what projects were at various stages. But this is just what I like to show you every quarter, to show you every one of our projects are active. The green kind of shows you the stuff that has, what we can expect next for these projects. So you can see we have a whole bunch of projects that are having different design submittals in phases during this calendar year. So those are going to move over to the construction fairly early next year. So good news is, things are moving forward, very on schedule, on time. Next slide. So you may recall, a couple quarters ago, I gave you a presentation on the global economics and the supply chain issues. So today, I just wanted to give you a summary of what's been happening over the last six quarters. Every quarter, I get an update from our economist at Jacobs about what is the supply chain looking like? What's happening? So I picked six different commodities that are important for the flood protection program. You can see on this slide, from the last six quarters, where the green is just the information that was recently published and the blue was from second quarter 2002, that concrete and pumps have been pretty steady, right around 10 to 20% above what we used to pay before the pandemic. But the good news, things like copper and stainless steel and steel pipe, they're starting to come down to pre-pandemic pricing. So it's still very volatile. You can see for the valves and electrical gear, they go up, they go down. So those are obviously dependent upon manufacturers and who's working and who's not. So it's still a little bit of volatility, but it's also some good news. Some of the key commodities are coming down to pre-pandemic prices consistently. So we're hoping that as we continue to monitor that quarterly, we get a lot more commodities coming down. Next slide. Very similar for labor. We're seeing very steady decline in concrete contractors. They're really steady around 10% above what we used to pay, but they were 30% above. So generally speaking, contractor, general contractor labor has been steady. It hasn't had a lot of significant increases. But unfortunately, general contractors and electrical contractors, you can see on the bid side, they have that variability that they're still accommodating. They don't know how long it's going to take to get this equipment yet. Sometimes it's fast, sometimes it's not. So we're still seeing some escalated pricing. And it really depends upon what the economy is doing in that particular quarter. But there's nothing that's super alarming with this information. I think it's all very good, positive information that it's improving for the work that we need for the flood protection program. I have one more slide. Now, this is to show you some equipment delivery times. Now, you can see this about, this is before, this is where we are now. So you can see, generally speaking, it's taking 40 weeks to get an emergency generator from the time you order it to the time you get it delivered. But the biggest problem that we have on vertical construction for anything that has electrical, if you need a switchgear, it's taken 80 weeks. So it used to take 40, now it's taken 80. So those are all about the components that go into that, nickel and other materials that are becoming harder and harder to find because of supplier and demand issues. So that's why we have a little bit of variability still in our pricing. Some of our vertical construction, we don't know what all the prices are going to be. But we're seeing still some leveling off in how long it takes. Before, it was steadily higher. And it's still higher than it used to be, but it's getting better. So just wanted to give you a flavor for kind of what we're tracking. And the last one I'm tracking is fuel. We've been tracking fuel since December 2019. And you can see that peak that we had in June of 2022 is still the peak. We haven't reached that again. But both diesel and gasoline fuel are back up on the upswing. So this affects our pricing for everything because you need freight. Freight takes trucks, and that brings our materials to us. So some of our projects have a lot of soil handling, like dredging and stuff. So we have a lot of truck involved. So that's why we monitor this amount. So this is obviously based upon availability of oil and where we're getting our oil. So just keeping you appraised of what it looks like, the big picture, instead of just blasting you with what it looks like right now. So the next topic I want to talk about is one of those new approaches that Mr. Duhany mentioned. We have been reporting to you consistently about what the schedule and the budget is for this program. But we really wanted to do it in a more transparent manner, in a better way to report how it's changing over the course of the program. So that's what we're going to talk about today. So we're going to talk about benchmarking. And you may have heard that term before. It's really just comparing where you are to a set point in time. How did you perform based how you thought you were going to perform? So that's what we're going to be doing and what we're proposing to do for you today. And we wanted to, this is an industry standard approach that we do on multiple programs, on multiple things that we do. It's going to replace how we're doing it now, where we're comparing our pricing, our program totals to the current CIP. This is independent of the CIP, this approach. It's really dependent upon, I'm going to show you the details of it now. So the way, we're going to start with the estimate. So the way that you're seeing it right now, you'll recognize this table and this graph from your monthly reports that we provide you. You can see that we're showing you every month what's the total cost of this program. As Mr. Mayor said, it's $998 million right now. And then on the table, you have it broken down by each of those master projects. So that first line, you can see the estimate for that Windsor Woods bundle is around $490 million. So the total of that, we're comparing to that second column in the table to the CIP. So right now, we're saying, okay, the 2023 CIP had 726, and right now, we're at 998. That's really a subjective style of reporting. It's just comparing it to what was in that current year's budget report. What we want to go to is really finding a point in time where we can set that estimate and say, this is what it's going to cost. And then we're going to compare, as it goes through its project phases, against that point in time. So the question is, what point in time do you pick? There's a couple set points that we have. The first set point is planning. You know, we still have 11 projects that are in the planning phase, and they're listed here. And they total $813 million. Now, those are very conceptual. We talked about before, those are Class V, very conceptual level projects. They haven't been vetted with field information. We haven't walked around and seen everything they need to do. We don't even have all of them located yet. We just know what we need to do to solve a flooding issue in that area. So we're going to continue to use those numbers moving forward until the project gets to a 30% design. 30% design is an industry standard phase where you have pretty much really under, could you go to the next slide real quick? You're going to have to click twice. One more. Yeah, I want to, whack, one more. Sorry, I want to really explain the difference between planning and 30% design. In planning, like I talked to you before, it's a Class V estimate. We know what problem we're going to solve. We've already evaluated different alternatives and options for addressing that problem. And we come up with a cost that's kind of based on how similar projects that we did before and some of our judgment. By the time we progress to 30%, you can see from the right-hand side, there's a lot that's happened. We have selected the site. We understand if there are any property issues. Do we need an easement? Do we need to acquire a piece of property? Do we need, what kind of drainage do we need? What's that site look like? Where's this pipe going to align on which roads and what right of ways? We've been out in the field. We have some geotechnical data. We know what the ground looks like. We know if there's groundwater issues. We know what kind of soil can we build on this? Is there bedrock? We know all those kind of utility conflicts. And as far as the structures, we've had a chance to look at what would the code imply? How would we have to build that building? We've picked a foundation type and we've picked a roof type. So what happens as it moves forward in design is we design those types. But right now, we've really set the basis of design. Here's what this project's going to look like. Here's all the criteria that we're going to design it to. So that's an appropriate point in time to say, we feel like we have enough information about this project that we understand how much it's going to cost. So we're proposing to set that as like a baseline. The 30% design cost is what we're going to track these projects against. So as those planning projects become design projects, when they get to 30% design, they'll get this number sent to them. Now, will you go back two slides? I'm sorry, two clicks. So this is what I'm going to show you. This is a little bit how it looks like. So you can see, these are the 16 projects that have reached 30% design or farther. The top two have our 30% design, and you can see that's their estimate. But we don't stop at 30% design. All of our projects continue. And those projects that are on this list right here, when they were at 30% design, their total was $134.1 million. Will you click it once? So now we have a current estimate. So I'm saying at that 30% design, that's where we want to baseline. We want to compare all future estimates to what we set at 30%. To be very transparent to you, to how these projects are evolving over time. So you can see, some of them are going down. That third project listed, Elizabeth River Watershed, is at 60% design. And the project costs have come down compared to the 30% design. Others have gone up. The fourth project, Marsh Restoration over at Back Bay, that 90% was higher, was higher than the 30% design. So the engineering staff and the Public Works team have all the justification for why these estimates are higher. But we still want to track that change from the 30% where we had it set and kind of locked down. So you can see that overall, we have what we thought was going to cost $134 million. Now it's $185. And we're hoping that that gap is a little bit less as we move forward because we're getting newer 30% design values with the current economy. So I want to page to the pie charts. So let's talk about what that looks like a little bit. So for the benchmark, I showed you, you can see, my recall, we had 11 projects in planning, and those totaled $813 million. That's the blue in this pie chart, the bigger piece. Now, the orange section, that's the small piece, represents the project that reached 30% design. So that's our whole project, program benchmark is 947. Now, on the left side, you can see those orange projects continue to advance through design and construction, and the green amount increased. So our current estimate is 998, but our benchmark is 947. One more click. And the reason we want to do that is because we want to give you a program variance. We want to be very transparent with how these projects are evolving. We want you to know what we thought it cost and then where it ended up and why. So this is really, we believe it's an industry, it is an industry standard, but we think it's a approach that's easy to understand. It's easy to implement. It puts a little more pressure on staff to make sure our 30% designs are as comfortable as we can be. You know, obviously, if we did it at 90% or 60%, we'd be a lot more comfortable because there's a shorter variance between you get to construction. But this is industry standard, and that's something we're prepared to implement. So I want to show you the difference in your monthly report that you can see. We get some concurrence today as next month's report. Instead of the information on the left side, we're going to give you the information on the right side. So that purple represents the benchmark for the program. And that's the planning cost plus what's been 30% designed. And then we're going to give you the estimate right next to it, which is what's still in planning and what is the current estimate. So over time, all of that blue will turn green. And so our benchmark will go up a little bit. It will go down as we get projects to 30%. And then the green will be what the green ends up being. So you'll at least see how it's evolving over time. And then we can give you a variance from the program estimate. Instead of telling you what it costs compared to the last CIP, the table on the right, you can say, we're at 998 and our benchmark is 947. So that's a 5% variance is where we're at right now. Instead of some number that's going to change every year and not have a basis for comparison. So that's what we're proposing. I know it's a little bit unusual for what you might have normally seen. So I wanted to see if that resonates with you. You feel that that's a good way to do that reporting? Does it explain it well?
For the presentation. Not sure what prompted you to take this pivot, but coming out of consulting, this is incredible. It's easy to understand, and it shows us why we should be following it at 30, at maybe 60, at 90. Because, I mean, you've just broken this down so thoroughly. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if I may, Councilman, in your retreat, one of the areas that were identified was the need for us to be transparent. And it's not just for this retreat. This has been a hallmark of this program since it was envisioned, since we went forward with the referendum, the desire to be transparent. We felt that, we felt that comparing our variance, the current estimate, to the estimate that we had 18 months ago, which is what the existing CIP is, was, it was useful, but it was only so useful. And ultimately, as Alicia pointed out, this has the chance to make the Department of Public Works look not as good, right? Because really, as we get, as we close in on the end of this program, all of our estimates are going to, are going to come into alignment. We have the ability to say, in our current, the way that we're currently structured, we finished all our projects on time and on budget. Because we're adjusting it as we go. We felt that this was a better way to do this. We're going to have some wins, and we're going to have some losses. But we felt that this is the way that we build trust with our citizens and make sure that we can say, hey, this is how our performance is. And if we're missing more than we're hitting, then we know we need to adjust what it is that we're doing. But again, this has always been about transparency, and this shift is specifically made for that purpose.
Anyone else? I think it's really, really good to have, you know, what I would call a real-time analysis about what's going on. You know, obviously, you know, with economic conditions, you know, things can improve. It's a continual flux, neither positive or negative. But at least, you know, what you're doing, you know, we do the ground breakings and we do the ribbon cuttings, and there's a lot that goes on in the middle. And what happens is that you deal with this on a daily basis. But giving us the real-time, you know, analysis what's going on, you know, we have to know what this is going to cause us. We've got to know what's going on. Because this way, I guess, we can, you know, judge how we're going to do other CIP projects. Okay, so kudos to you.
Okay. I just have very few more slides.
Okay.
So one of the reasons I wanted to say it matters today, what we decide on, is because not everything's going to reach 30% until 2025. So this year, we have three more projects that are going to get to 20, get to that 30% benchmark. Then 2024 calendar year, we have four. Then in 2025, we'll have four more. So it's, these things take time, and some of them take longer than others. And we've staggered the program as we talk to you about schedule. So those ones that are blue in planning for the 2025 are going to stay blue until we get that green estimate in 2025. So I just want to make sure you understood, I'm not going to get all those 30% right away. It's kind of a three-year window. So we're just proposing a very similar thing to the schedule. So what we're doing right now is just really showing you what's changed since we last talked to you. So what changed on the project? When did, did it go to, we showed in green? Did it go from design to construction? We're not really giving you how are we doing on schedule. So we're proposing a very similar metric. Let's set the schedule as the baseline at the 30% design, saying this is how it's going to be built. Now, some projects are going to be coming on schedule. Here's an example of that. So here's a typical, this is not a specific project, it's an example. So you might see this in your monthly report, that here's a baseline, and we met all four, all quarters. So there's a check mark, we met it. All projects aren't going to meet it. Some projects are going to, the second project, we're forecasting a slow start. We're going to be late to start it, but we're still going to finish on time. So we're finding ways to pick up the scope. That third project, maybe we'll finish early. So we're kind of showing you where are we on schedule compared to that benchmark. And then some of those, those ones on the 2025, where we're getting to 30%, they're not going to have a schedule until we get to that 30%. So that's kind of that fourth, fourth example there. So this is what we're proposing for your monthly report to replace the previous one, just to kind of show you on a quarter, and we're going from early, mid to late year to quarters, so that it aligns better with our master schedule. So we're really getting, drilling down a little bit more specificity for you. And we're also showing you how we're performing against that baseline. Now, you might see some X's on there in the future. Something might not meet, you know, a schedule. So, but we'll be transparent about it, and we'll show it as we move forward with the program. I think that's my last slide. The schedule one's a lot simpler than the estimate one.
That was outstanding. Anybody else at this point? You know, I think, I think it's important, when you say, especially with the supply chain, and something, something might take 80 weeks to, you know, get something going. And if I recall, when they were building this building, there was a six-month delay because they couldn't get the bricks. Okay? So, you know, the law of unintended consequences will rear us ugly heads to you folks, but it seems like you've got a real handle on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara.
What we have in our hand doesn't show all of the slides because it shows the first, but not when you added others. And when I'm going back to look at this later on, I'm not going to have those slides.
We'll get you that updated slide deck.
And the ones that didn't show up, every time you added another.
Okay.
Didn't come in.
Ms. Utterback has it, she can send it to you.
I actually have them, I can pass them off.
Okay, thank you. We did a few tweaks.
Hey, thanks a bunch. Great work, folks.
Thank you.
Yep, Patrick.
I'm Mr. Mayor, at this time, LJ Hanson, our Public Works Director, will provide a council of presentation regarding the easement request. Regarding the Dominion project, so there's an opportunity for City Council to authorize staff to accept a purchase cost for the easement request related to our offshore wind project, and LJ Hanson will give you an update on this.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. It's my pleasure this afternoon to talk to you about the Dominion Energy offshore wind request for easement. This afternoon, I just want to talk a little bit about the, about the request, but before I do, I thought it'd be helpful to have a little bit of project background for those that are not familiar. The offshore wind project is Dominion's first attempt at offshore wind. As they bring the energy ashore, they need to have a corridor to route that energy to their facilities inland. And that's the purpose of the project today. They have 176 wind turbines offshore, producing 2.6 gigawatts of power, which is enough to power up to about 660,000 homes. Staff engaged with Dominion and their engineering partners to try to identify the best corridor that they could. Back in 2021, we had a series of meetings with them. A lot of that really kind of worked around existing corridors that were available for us to work in. And the Departments of Public Works, Planning, Economic Development, Utilities, and the City Attorney's Office, along with Parks and Rec, all played a critical role. And I would, I would say that Dominion was very open to having that conversation with us. They were, they were good partners, and I believe we were good partners as well. In addition to engaging with the city, Dominion's also done a host of community engagement projects. They started early in March of 2021 and continued well through August of 2021 with a number of online and in-person events. I think there's another slide that talks about that. So there's additional community engagement for some of the communities that were adjacent to the, to the corridor that they're looking at. Dominion also employed a local historian and reached out to underrepresented communities. Again, I think that they have done a lot to make sure that they were engaged with the community throughout this process, and, and I feel like they've done a lot to make sure that our community was involved. Considerations on determining the route were given to visual and environmental impacts. Much of the route utilizes alignments of the southeastern Parkway and Green Belt. And, and that's kind of critical, as, as that project has taken a different turn throughout its course of history, this, we're very fortunate that we have that alignment, and it also lines up very well with where it is that they're trying to go. I would point out that we have, for the most part, we have about 300 feet of corridor along that southeastern Parkway corridor. In all cases, we've preserved at least 150 feet so that we can use it for additional transportation projects or for something else that we may feel like we need to use it for in the future. It's also worth noting that the SEC approved this route in August of 2022. So I'm going to step through a couple of slides showing properties that the city owns that will be impacted by the, by the project. Now, this area is directly west of General Booth. It's, it's located near the aquarium. This will be an underground bore, so there will not be above-ground towers. So the, at this point, where the lines come ashore at the beach, they'll still be underground at this point. This alignment shows the area south of Oceana Naval Air Station as it comes down towards London Bridge. You've got Prince George Estates, Castleton, that are our neighborhoods shown in this. This will be above ground. The area shown in yellow is the area that is proposed for the Dominion easement. The area in red to the left, or where the red text is to the left, is the area that would remain for the city of Virginia Beach to use for other purposes. This is where it crosses over West Net Creek. You have Maple Shade Drive as we're approaching Holland Road to the left. You can see also that it changes from one side of the easement to the other, and we don't believe that that causes us any issues along this corridor. It still preserves us with, with what it is that we need. This is the area as it goes across to Holland Road. You can see the Virginia Beach Sportsplex in the upper left, and as it enters into the ITA, to the lower, lower left. Again, transitioning through the ITA. One thing I would point out in this slide is, you start to see that the yellow decreases here, it goes into an all-red state. That is where it enters the existing Dominion easement. And in this slide, this is getting close to where it enters the city of Chesapeake. Again, most of the corridors in the existing Dominion easement with a little bit of yellow, you can see on both sides of the neighborhoods. And that's Dewberry, I believe it's Dewberry Farms and Indian River Farms in, in those slide there. Want to talk a little bit about what to expect in that easement. We're looking at concrete monopoles as opposed to the steel truss-style towers. So what you see in the, on the left is more in, in line with what the style is as opposed to the, the steel ones that are crossed out there. The rendering to the, to the right is actually the rendering that they have identified for us. So it's actually three towers with hangers on each of the towers that would take up the area that's identified. This is, is included in your packet, but it does show you the different properties that are impacted. So Dominion is seeking to acquire about four miles of easements from the city in exchange for $19 million. Now, that excludes the VBDA parcel, which is highlighted in yellow, the Development Authority parcel, which is highlighted in yellow. The way that these parcels were acquired, in many cases, was tied to the creation of the southeastern Parkway. Because they were a transportation project, and I'll defer to the City Attorney's Office for maybe more legalese, but because of the way that they were acquired, a portion of the funding would have to be routed back into transportation CIPs as a result of any sale that we did here. Additionally, there's an additional, in addition to the one, to the $19 million, there's an additional $1.14 million in tree mitigation costs. And I want to talk just, just a little bit about the tree mitigation. The city, of course, has an administrative directive in the city code section to, that requires us to mitigate for the loss of tree canopy along the proposed, proposed route. Tree mitigation will be just sent to Parks and Recreation, but we're looking at about 38.2 acres, or 38.17 acres to be more precise, at a cost of $29,925 an acre, which comes up to $1.14 million. That $1.14 million would go to a dedicated fund for Parks and Rec to use for the reestablishment of trees on other city properties. I did talk to the Parks and Rec Director this morning. They don't have a specific spot that is located at this point, that's identified at this point. They don't feel that this is going to be an issue, though. They feel they'll be able to, to spend that funding appropriately and reestablish trees throughout the city. Looking forward to next steps, the city staff continue to work with Dominion to identify some things that we'd like to clarify in, in as far as the language goes, specifically how trails might, might work along that route, if we, if we had some stormwater ponds or something that we needed to locate along there. We, we feel like we have a, a good conversation going, although those things are not all worked out at this time. Sale is proposed to be a single ordinance for all of the parcels rather than multiple ordinances. It would require a supermajority vote because several of the parcels have been put to a public use or otherwise acquired in such a way that they require a supermajority to be sold. And then last, the proposed schedule, we have the public briefing here today on the 19th. We're proposing a public hearing on October 3rd and a vote on October 17th.
Okay, any questions?
I would point out, we do have representatives from Dominion here, should you have any questions.
Okay, word.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hanson, for the presentation. Can you go back to impacted properties and specifically, can you walk, walk us through, maybe at a high level, how you derive easement value?
I'm sorry, sir.
Can you tell us how you come up with easement value? Just at a high-level formula?
Sure. I'm going to, I'm going to let, I'm going to let Tim Copeland, our real estate manager, describe that.
So, Councilman Remick, the Dominion had these properties individually appraised by a certified general real estate appraiser based in Richmond. They went through and, just as any appraisal does, valued the land, and then they put a value on that, and then based on that value, that the appraiser determined, Dominion then came back and used that as a basis for their offer.
They did give us 100% for the area that we were talking about. Now, that's, that's not always the case, but I think Dominion recognized that the use, usage of these, of this specific easement would be severely curtailed.
Can we feel comfortable with these values?
Yes, sir. In, in looking through the appraisal, I mean, it's, it's solid. And, and again, getting back to how Dominion worked with the city to, to route these lines, it really wasn't a lot of uneconomic remnants that were left over, not a lot of stuff we couldn't use. So I felt they did a good job of estimating damages where there were damages. So comfortable, very comfortable with the, with the price.
I just want to follow up, just colleagues, for relevance tonight on our agenda, is a requirement for outdoor storage, and I believe that a lot of that outdoor storage is relevant to what's going on here with the transmission lines and equipment across the city.
Yes, sir.
Good point. Amelia.
Yes, I want to applaud Dominion for what they have done, going through the communities, going through the different cultural organizations, and getting feedback. I've been following, and in fact, I've been on a lot of these online efforts that they have put out to the community. So I really applaud that because you can follow exactly and ask any questions and so forth. So they really did a great job on that. And then the second thing I wanted to ask about the consideration of next steps, where you have sale would be a single ordinance, can you go a little bit more? The second one, about the parcel sales.
Yes, ma'am. Our, our intent was to put forward a single ordinance for the sale of the entirety of the easement. So we were not going to break it up. In, in other words, as we mentioned, some of these are part of the, part of the greenway and part, and some of them are not. It was our intent to just put them all into a single ordinance. We'll work out the details in as far as which ones have to go back to transportation CIPs, but it doesn't need to be in two different, in two different votes.
Okay, thank you.
Barbara.
Well, I also echo what Amelia said about your, the Dominion Energy's relationship with the community. It's been very good, but we all know that when the construction actually starts, that's when people are really going to get interested. And so with things about ready to happen, I know that we're going to be getting a lot of concern from people who didn't pay a whole lot of attention to it until the construction really starts, and so we'll, we'll have to stay up on that. As far as the tree mitigation, is there going to be a concern about trying to mitigate in the area generally where the trees were taken down? For example, the same watershed or the same neighborhoods? Because if the trees were taken down in District 2, it would certainly be good if they could be replaced in, in, in the general area where they were taken down. I know that it's not always possible, but I hope that there will be that attempt to make sure that the mitigation is going to try to be close to where the impact was.
Yes, ma'am. Tim was just telling me that, to your first point, Dominion has a series of pre-construction public outreaches that are planned before they, before they get underway. And with regard to your second point, again, when I talked to the Director of Parks this morning, he told me he had a number of places that this, that they would be able to, to do tree mitigation, but we'll certainly convey that message to, to move forward.
Right. I think since we know essentially where, you know, the trees are going to be coming down, and an awful lot of that is in the ITA, which, you know, the city owns its own property there, and it was purchased for the purpose of keeping it open space and so forth. So I think we certainly have area available. I think the city owns 60% of the ITA, so we certainly have capability, and I, I hope we will try to have the mitigation close to where the impact is, because it's definitely going to change those neighborhoods, and we'll just be prepared for a lot of calls this fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, for Tim. Councilman Remick just brought up the relevancy to the planning item later today. Can you go back to the appraisal piece? Give us an idea, so you say Dominion's paying at appraisal above. Can you give us some insight to that?
Sure. So the total appraised value, and I'm just, Councilman, I'm going to go off of including the VBDA piece is what I remember, but the total appraised values are approximately $8.8 million.
Okay.
Dominion's offer was $20 million, including the $1 million for the VBDA parcel.
Significantly above appraisal.
Yes, sir.
Again, Councilman, that was because the original appraiser applied a, a value to it, assuming it was like an underground easement where you would only give a portion. And, and so that was not the offer that they made to us. Just want you to understand why they would do that. I don't, I don't want their shareholders freaking out.
Okay, Amelia.
Virginia Beach Beautification Commission, when we get to those trees.
I'm sorry.
Virginia Beach Beautification Commission.
We will, I, I'll make that comment. Parks and Rec, I, I don't see a representative from Parks and Rec here, but we will definitely make sure that they're aware of that comment.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else at this point? Okay, thanks a lot.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would like to point out that today is Phil Pollan, our city engineer, this is his last city council meeting. I think he's been through quite a few, and and I would personally like to say very much how, how very much I appreciate all of his work for the city of Virginia Beach.
I could embarrass Mr. Pollan just one moment further. It's also his birthday. Oh, dude, son's birthday, oh. Okay, it's not his birthday, it's his son's birthday. Facebook deceived.
Let's try.
Right, Dana, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we've got an important topic to talk about.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of City Council. Today, I'm going to walk through a few slides discussing interim appointments and special Thank you, Mr. Stiles.
The job descriptions for city attorneys is very extensive.
This is going to go in my evaluation. All right, so the goal for this presentation is to provide the relevant background for you and allow you to discuss and provide direction for the preparation of one or more actions on your October 3rd agenda. I would like to acknowledge the local electoral board and voter registrar for their contribution to the practical considerations slide. They are both in attendance should you have questions that relate to their inputs or We anticipate the vacancies to occur September 29th. District 1 was filled by a special election in November 2022. District 1 was filled by a special election in November 2022 for a term that ends December 31st, 2024. The natural term of office for District 1 is on the ballot November 2024. The sheriff's four-year cycle is a year behind the cycle for District 1. This term ends December 31st, 2025, so the following four-year term will be filled in the November 2025 election. An interim appointment is contemplated by both the Virginia Code and the Virginia Beach City Charter. There are a few notable differences for your consideration. The City Charter allows 60 days for the City Council to fill the vacancy by interim appointment, and the City Charter uses the word "shall," whereas the Virginia Code provides 45 days and uses the term "may." The text of the charter provides that the interim appointee serves for their unexpired term. However, the Virginia Code expressly overrides the City Charter in mandating that there be a special election to fill a vacancy. The caveat here is that the Virginia Code also says that there need not be a special election if the election to fill the vacancy would occur within 60 days of the end of the term. And any November election day is going to be within that 60-day window before December Moving to interim appointments for a constitutional officer, the Virginia Code provides that fulfilling such vacancies by the highest-ranking deputy who is qualified to vote for and hold the office. Much like an interim appointment to the City Council, this person serves until there's a special election and the person who is elected has qualified. The Virginia Code requires the City Council request a writ of election within 15 days of the occurrence of a vacancy. There is some discretion in the choice of dates for a special election. As we find ourselves within 90 days of the November election date, the choice is next November or a suitable date following the date rules for special elections. I have included the four statutory rules for setting dates of a special election. And as stated previously, next November at the election date will be within the 60 days of the end of the term. So November 2024 is not an option for a special election for the District 1 vacancy. Therefore, the choice really is between no special election or a special election that precedes the March 2024 presidential primary by more than 55 days. Looking at the calendar, 15 days after the anticipated vacancy leaves only one voting meeting for the City Council, that's the October 3rd meeting. And then looking towards the beginning of next year, working back from the presidential primary, the Tuesdays in January are the 2nd and the 9th. For the constitutional officer vacancy, there is again the 15-day requirement for the City Council to request a writ of election. In this case, the choices are November 2024 or a date prior that meets the rules for special elections. In either instance, the person elected would serve until December 31st, 2025. For the sake of being thorough, I also note that the statutory requirement that the special election be held promptly. What that exactly means in this context is not completely clear, but nonetheless, it is in the statute. And then the calendar notes are similar to the calendar notes in the previous slide. Anticipated action on October 3rd. Special election date possibilities include the first two Tuesdays in January. My office has been in contact with the voter registrar so you can be informed of the concerns from the people that will need to carry out any special election. The local electoral board met on September 11th to discuss planning and to provide its perspective. The board believes it can support a District 1 special election to be held on January 9th. The board was not supportive of a citywide special election in January because of concerns about poll books and other equipment that would be placed out of service for the 30 days following the special election. They noted the beginning of early voting for the presidential primary starts on January 19th. You will see on the slide the estimated costs associated with a single district and a citywide special election. The voter registrar also notes that these costs do not include any equipment rental necessitated by a recount following the November 2023 election. Last, the clerk of the circuit court, who, thank you for joining us, has concerns about staffing and space requirements associated with the citywide election in January. As you may recall, she takes possession of the election equipment on election night and must hold that equipment in a vault pending any challenge or recount following the election. For scenario planning, there are really three paths to address the District 1 vacancy. Path 1 is an interim appointment before the end of the 60 days and a regular election in November 2024. Because this is the regular election for District 1, the City Council would not need to take action to request a special election at its meeting on October 3rd. Path 2, an interim appointment before the end of the 60 days and a special election in January. The date of January 9th, 2024 is a date recommended by the local electoral board. The City Council would need to adopt a resolution at its October 3rd meeting directing the city attorney file the writ requesting the special election. And option 3 is no interim appointment and a special election in January. There is some risk associated with this course of action because of the word "shall" in the relevant section of the City Charter, but it is our belief that the courts would generally be deferential to City Council for two reasons. First, the special election would already be scheduled in the January date. Second, if the judges of the circuit court made an appointment after the 60 days, such appointment would be for, in essence, a month. And it's also worth noting that this option 3 would leave District 1 without representation for more than three months. The scenarios for the sheriff are limited because the interim appointment occurs by operation of law. The City Council would be required to pick a date for the special election. This could occur in January 2024 or November 2024. I note previously the concerns voiced by both the local electoral board and the clerk of the circuit court. And I will stand by for questions and hopefully receive direction as to what you would like to see on your agenda for October 3rd.
Okay, let's talk about it. Michael?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Harmer. I do thank you, and I want to thank the members of the electoral board and as well the, all the folks from the registrar and the CUS and for being here as well and for participating in this conversation. As I expressed previously, this is something that's, I think, rarely cuts right to the heart about what is American, what is special about our American system, and that's that the voters elect their representatives. And in this case, I mean, there's just no denying that this election is one of the, this vacancy would be one of the longest that we've ever had, among the longest we've ever had, serving for well over a year if we move forward with an appointment. That's a budget cycle. That's addressing a variety of very sensitive issues that are unique to District 1. And I think the people of District 1 and the people of Virginia Beach deserve the opportunity to have an elected representative serving here in this body rather than an appointed And so I hope that the council will agree. I've spoken to many people in the community and most, if not, most of them do agree. I have heard from others who feel differently, but there's just something very special about our American system, and I think we should honor it here. The other thing is that with regard to the question about whether or not to have a District 1 election or a citywide election, there is a unique difference. I mean, well, there's two differences now because we heard about the practical concerns that were raised by the folks who would have to run the election. And so that's something definitely to take into consideration. But the other is that there is a clear line of succession for that constitutional office that's prescribed by state code. So the choice for selection goes to the next highest chief deputy. That's very clearly laid out. It's not that they're going to just, you know, open an application process for appointment the way that council does for, to any citizen, to any registered voter, the way council does for District 1. So I do think that there's a difference, but I defer to the wisdom and the judgment of the body about that. But my strong preference, and that of many of the people I've spoken to, is that we move forward with a special election for District 1 that is achievable, can be done in early January. And I think it makes the most sense to honor our commitment to be a representative body. We're not talking about a short-term appointment here. We're not talking about a few months over the holidays. We're talking about well over a year, and the voters should have their choice. They should have their voice heard in that matter.
Anybody else? Amelia?
Well, looking at this, I agree about the special election. And I'm looking at, if you can talk a little bit more about option 2. We have someone interim.
Correct.
And still have the election.
Correct, so.
Just for District 1.
Correct. So the City Council would have until that date, November 28th, to make that interim appointment. It would be up to the City Council as far as how much process or input or what have you they would like to include in that process. We have some previous examples we can draw upon, but it really is up to City Council. And then if so directed, the writ of election would be filed before that 15-day after the vacancy period. So in essence, you'd have parallel paths. You would have the election ordered in the courts and all that, and then you would have the City Council doing the appointment, and that person would serve until the election's completed and the person so elected is qualified.
Okay, other question that comes up. Normally, when you have an appointment, one of the questions come up, are you planning to run after your appointment in the special election? We've had cases where people just serve and then, and we've had cases where people serve and then come back and also. And the question in the community comes up with, well, that person has gotten a little special treatment because they've been seen already in those past October through the ending of December. Talk about that area.
So you wouldn't have a mechanism to legally keep somebody from qualifying to have their name put on the ballot if they're otherwise eligible to serve? However, as a practical matter, you could make it known that you either want to see candidates that desire to stay on or that you don't want to see candidates that stay on, that you're able to state that preference to the piece of the process that you control, which is the appointment process?
Thank you.
Okay, Christian and Barbara.
Thank you, Dana. So to that point, in the last, we had, when Lewis Jones passed away, rest in peace, there was chatter that the council had made that determination that they want, they preferred someone that wasn't going to run for the seat. I don't know if that's accurate or not. And so I'd be interested if there's language in the charter that says, because I know if a council member wants to run for another office, they have to step down December 31st. So if we appointed someone to council before November 28th, and then they voiced or registered with, to run in the special election, would they step down December 31st? How does that?
So that provision is very specific and it's limited in its applicability. So I don't think you could just bind someone to something they said in an appointment process. And so that's sort of why I fall back on, the Virginia Constitution provides the qualifications for office and they're very limited. And so it's not really the ability of the City Council to add an additional requirement before someone could access to the ballot. That's sort of the principle.
And then, Mayor, I have some, so we had a special session in February, and this is, I think, germane, the practical concerns then from the electoral board. And I think it is important for us to listen to them because they have to do, they have to perform the duties. And Mr. Balogh and Christine Lewis were before us. Back then, there was an estimate that it was going to be roughly $500,000 just for the district race, so I'm glad to see that came down significantly. That was at the hour and 10-minute mark of the meeting. It was $500,000 for the district, and we had some questions. 1,200 volunteers, 14 hours a day, and they were concerned with the statewide election. So I know you're looking for guidance. So from District 8, I'd love to see option 2 for the City Council, and then to provide fairness for anyone that would like to run for sheriff. I don't see us going against the electoral board that had already established it was impossible to do a citywide. So we'd be looking at almost $700,000 trying to find all these volunteers. So scenario 1, City Council, option 2. And then again, just speaking for District 8, I'd love to see whoever's the highest ranking get promoted or appointed and then allow for a special election in November 2024. That's just speaking for District 8. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Barbara?
You know, again, we're talking about changing our longtime procedures without hearing from the public, particularly in a referendum that has to do with voting. And I'm just thinking of the practicality of people who might run for this office, that they're going to have to be very quickly gearing up to do a campaign, are going to need funding, and where is that going to come from? And with it being at the time of year that it is over the holidays, it's going to be extremely difficult to get people to take an interest in an election. And I just have to think that a January 9th election is going to be a very low turnout. And so I really wonder about the value of it. I think when I look back historically at all of the people who have been appointed to the council throughout the time that we have served, and I think a couple of you who are sitting here were first appointed, I think we've really had good people and it's been a way to get good people on the council. I don't see that it's that bad a thing, and I believe that this is the process that do all of the other localities in the state follow this process? Are there some that do have an election?
Mark, if you can update, you told me you got some data on the other jurisdictions.
I think there's either 37 or 38 Virginia cities, all but one.
Use an interim appointment followed by a special election.
I don't know. I kind of have to, I can't help but think of the inconsistency that we've just taken away the right of people to vote for nine city council members and 10 school board members, and we're all concerned about whether they're going to get to vote for a representative who's going to serve for one year. Somehow or other, our concern for voter participation doesn't look to be consistent. I'm really, I would really at least like to have a public hearing on this before we make any decision, but I think the practicality of looking at the difficulty of running someone, anybody, running a campaign and at this particular time of the year, in this tight timeframe, just, you know, what we are going to get. I think we, I think we've done some, made some very good selections through the appointment process over the year, and I think that does allow anyone who's interested to put their name in the hat. We get a lot of public input, a lot of feedback with the applicants, so I think it's worked very well. You haven't convinced me yet. I would really like to hear from the public.
Rosemary, then, Michael.
I have some other questions, because we haven't actually talked about the timeline of the practicality of candidates running. So if we vote on this October 3rd, it has to go to the courts and they have to approve it, correct?
Correct.
And then there's the timeline of when it's approved, that candidates have to get their signatures.
Correct, 60 days.
So they have 60 days to get their signatures?
I'm sorry, 60 days from the election. So you work back 60 days from whatever date the special elections to be held.
So they'd have to have their signatures in by November?
Somewhere around November 7th, November 9th, somewhere in there.
So how long is it going to take from the court to get approval and the window of time of getting the signatures in to get their names on the ballot? So can you please?
The clerk can correct me, the court can correct me if she believes me to be incorrect, but I believe that typically the court enters that order for the special election within days of receiving the writ.
They probably will. It's very busy, very crowded, very, very much up, but yes, in the special election markets. And so how long are they going to have? To get their signatures in and get filed, open their bank accounts, all the things that a candidate has to do.
It's going to be about a month. We will have the, if you give us direction today, we will have the writ prepared and ready to file Wednesday morning after you vote. And I can't promise you what the court will do, but I will tell you historically, it's been within a week that we've gotten the order back from the court, and I have no reason to believe it would be different here. I can't promise on their behalf, but that's my historic.
Can I?
Right, but that's historically, is that not correct?
That is correct.
So basically, a candidate would have about a month. So basically, a candidate would have about a month to do his or her organization and to get the signatures to get qualified to be on the ballot.
So my other question is, this is going to be in the middle of an election going on. Is the Electoral Board, are they going to be able to handle people bringing their stuff in and filing and getting all of that done and certified? And I mean, there's a lot to this. It all sounds great and very democratic, but there are some practicalities that we need to think about.
Yeah, come on up.
Yes, we would be able to handle that, the paperwork and everything that goes in with the special election.
You know, if I could just say, you know, this is quite a bit of a dilemma because I think historically, when we did make appointments, it was only for a matter of months, but now we're looking at a longer time. You know, when the question first came up earlier this year, I was at a meeting and I polled all the mayors in the 757, and every one of them do placeholder appointments. And they see no value in, you know, having a special election, especially for, you know, short windows. And as a matter of fact, the city of Norfolk, they just go in and appoint somebody and, you know, without really any input or, you know, that type of thing. And, you know, so I do see a little bit of a, you know, dilemma. I agree that we should let people vote, but the other thing, my concern is having perhaps some District 1 not represented for those three months. I think, you know, that's, you know, I have a concern there. And the fact is that we do appoint people who do vote, Planning Commission votes, you know, Economic Development Authority and everything. You know, this is a unique situation. I'm glad we're having the discussion, but I can, quite frankly, I see merits to both sides. But, you know, I'd like to hear from everybody. Jennifer?
So I think that this, it's been said that the value behind this is voters getting to participate in the election process, to have a voice and who represents them on council. So I think the appointment process has been part of our culture historically. I don't know that that means it's been appropriate or effective. So I would support maybe in the short term, doing an appointment with a move towards a special election, options 2 or option 3, moving towards a special election. I understand the practical concerns. I was thinking through that too. That's a very tight timeline, but we are also in district system. So I think that if you're going to try this out, now's the time to do it. So this isn't a citywide race, this is a district-wide race, and I think that's more feasible to do in this timeline than running for sheriff in the next however many weeks. So I support, we haven't put it to a referendum, so for me, it's anecdotal, but I've only heard support for wanting to vote. So from citizens and residents who don't like appointments, who don't feel that their voices are heard in that. And if the voter turnout is low, the voter turnout is low. I mean, I think that could be for any election, considering our privileges of voting, we could do better with our turnout. So it'll be what it will be, but I support a special election moving forward.
Yeah, Jennifer, thank you, and you have the very valid points, but I think that in one point that what you made and Mrs. Henry made about, you know, concern, the one step that we did put in extra last time, what we not only interviewed all of the, you know, the potentials, but we also then had a special meeting where the public was allowed to come in. So we did take that extra week step, you know, just to, you know, hopefully build some confidence and do get that public input. And I'm sure we would do that the same way if we went that direction. Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to thank Madam Clerk and members of the Board of Elections and our city registrar's office for being very, thank you very much for the presentation. Dana, and, you know, I think this year, we've got a very big difference, and that is, we are in a district system. And I think it is imperative that we give the residents of District 1 the opportunity to select who represents them on this council. And I don't think it's, I mean, I see the argument and I see the various points made, certainly, but I just don't think it's the right thing to do to have the rest of the city constructively select somebody to fill that seat. And, you know, I don't know what the right answer is on the interim appointment versus no interim appointment. Part of me thinks that that could be a little complicated to try and appoint somebody to serve such a short period of time while they're perhaps campaigning and learning how to do this job. I think it might make for an interesting appointment hearing when you've got somebody also running for office as well. And I don't know that we, as a council, maybe we need to think long and hard before we put ourselves into that kind of a situation. But for that reason, I think that, you know, and I'm sensitive to the residents of District 1 who won't have representation for that short period of time, but I think it's worth it. I think it's worth it for them to have somebody in that seat who, you know, from day one wants to run for it, and there isn't a question of whether or not they're a placeholder or not, they're running for the seat like we all did. And as far as the sheriff's office goes, I agree with what my colleagues have said in terms of the succession being laid out by statute and making that a little bit different. But another differentiator for the Office of Sheriff is that they're an executive officer with a large contingent of employees, and they exercise, you know, managerial authority at work. And I think that that chain of command and just harmony of the workplace really needs to be something that we keep in mind. So for that reason, I do believe that a November election for sheriff would be appropriate.
In this 2024, right?
Yeah, November 24th. So I would be in favor of option 3, but I'm open to hearing other points.
Thank you. So bring it up.
So in terms of the scenario for City Council, I go back to history prior to the new council or new folks coming in. I remember the appointment process was pretty contentious, and that's one of the reasons why the last body voted 6-5 to send that to Richmond so that that matter and the appointment process would be addressed. And that was for a reason. I've sat in very many meetings, and even with this particular opening, I'm already hearing about who's preferred. And if it were, you know, a process that was fair, if it were a process that was democratic, certainly was supported, but I was one of the ones who voted against it back in last year, and my perspective on that appointment process has not changed. And I remember hearing about who was preferred for seats that came up, and certainly was true in many cases. And so I'm not a fan, I'm not a supporter of the appointment process because it is not one that is, to me, and from experience, I'm not telling you something I heard, I'm telling you something that I've sat in, I've sat in meetings, I've seen the engagement, and I know the predictions and what I've seen come to pass. So I don't support it. I don't support that appointment process. For me, option 3 would be better. And I've heard from citizens who would like a special election in January for this seat to represent District 1. In terms of the sheriff, I would support a special election in November 2024.
Okay, Barbara, we heard. Okay, Worth, we'll run down the table.
Thank you. A lot has already been said. Councilman Schuman just spoke about the district system which we're in now. And so for this body to appoint, or not District 1, to appoint someone to represent District 1, to me, it's that simple. But I'll also say, just to follow on what Councilwoman Wooten just said, I did consider making myself an application one time for the appointment for a seat on council, and I decided not to do so because I really was not a part of the council at that point and felt, well, I was qualified to serve, I didn't feel like I really had a chance. And so, yes, we've made good choices for appointments before, and some are at the table now. At the same time, we've also decided not to appoint very capable people as well. So I think the democratic process will play out. I know it's going to be a lot whether a council person serves as well as campaigns. This is, campaigns are a test as to whether or not you can, you're capable of serving, in my opinion. So I know it's tough. It's tough for a lot of us who are at this table to get here. So for the sheriff, I would say for sure, let's have the statute take precedence, have the sheriff appointed, and then run in 2024, November. So either option 2 or 3. Probably option 3.
You got it. Chris?
Yeah, I thought I stated option 2. I mean, we haven't heard from the people of District 1, but I don't know if they want to go without representation. I mean, it's going to be a tight window, so option 2, but if the majority want to go with option 3, that's fine because I do stand by special session we called in February about not having interim appointments. So it's a, I stated option 2, but I'm open to option 3.
Could you put the options back up on the screen? Okay. Michael, what's that?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to just kind of respond to a couple of things that I heard, just in broad strokes, if I could. First of all, the General Assembly has special elections in January all the time, and turnout, sometimes turnout's high, sometimes turnout is low. Frankly, it depends on the candidates, and I don't think there's any shortage of candidates from District 1 who are interested in serving. And their enthusiasm, their work will bring people out to the polls, so I have no concern about that. If it works for the General Assembly, I think it could certainly work in District 1. In fact, the size really isn't that much different. The other thing that I really want to say is that the discussions about the practical concerns about whether or not people would run or the operational concern respectfully holds absolutely no water to me because practically, it may be easier for some to have no election. That's not the system, the great system that we were gifted by generations who came before us. We were gifted a system of where we elect our representatives. So practically, I'm sure it would be easier to not have an election, of course. It would be easier to not have to go through that process, but that's not the American process, not the great gift of democracy that we were provided by the founders and by the people who have maintained that for generations. And that's the honor that I think we should adhere to and live up to. Of course, it's a little more difficult, but it's the most fundamental thing we do. It's the most fundamental responsibility that we have as a body is to hold elections. And we have an opportunity to do that here, where practically possible, and there may be instances that are shorter term where it's not possible, but that's why I also joined the six during the last legislative process to indicate my support for voters electing their representatives, not for this council making this decision.
Thank you. Amelia?
I already set mine.
Okay.
And I'm comfortable with the three. And I remember we had a council person who had to run right after that election and be ready to get seated in January, right? You know, your husband.
Yes.
Okay, so it's possible, and already people are abuzz about this opportunity for District 1. We're hearing it all over the place, so it's time they roll up their sleeves. That's the way we're going to go.
Rosemary, any final comments?
I do. Of course, I'm going to support the will of the body. I think option 2 is a lot to go through, two meetings. By the time they get appointed, we have two meetings in December. And then we're going to break. That seems a lot for everyone, for us to go through and for candidates that want to be appointed. So I don't think option 2 is a very good idea. I support the Electoral Board and what they want to do with the sheriff. It's too big of a jump for them. I don't think that we should support that. Let's go ahead and let it take its course. So we're going to do it. I think option 3 is the only good idea.
Yeah, and thank you all for your, we have here is a unique, I think, situation. I came up, you know, to the city of Virginia Beach. You know, I think I mentioned last time that I was leaning toward option 3 because of the time, but once again, I think a further discussion, if an appointment's going to be six months or maybe thereabouts, you know, that may, you know, change the equation for a placeholder, but that's something later on. But the fact that it's going to be a year of, you know, pretty much. And the other thing, you know, pointed out that we're coming into the holidays, we're going to have Thanksgiving, we're going to have everything. And I think the quicker we make the decision, the quicker the folks can start organizing their campaigns. Yes, Chris?
Clarifying question. Has Councilman Holcomb stepped out? He was appointed in 2021? When was he originally appointed?
So he was appointed, I believe, July of 2021, but we were under a court order at that time, and so we were enjoined from doing a special election that November. And so after we received the court order at the end of December, the first meeting in January, we were able to do the resolution for a writ of special election for that November. But we just couldn't act because of the court order.
That was, I was going to say, that's about 15 months.
Understood, yeah, but for a very specific reason.
Yes.
Yeah, there were special circumstances. So if the body agrees, I think if we make a decision now, I think it'll be helpful to a lot of folks. And, you know, does anybody object to moving?
Can I just make comments?
Yeah, please.
I'm not sure of the process, but just want to let you all know.
Hey, please come up and talk. More information, the better right now.
I agree with everything everybody's said at the table, everything. And it is the people's right to vote for who they want to represent them. I do just want to mention, so I just think you all need to know, it does put, we have three elections next year already, one in March, one in June, one in November, a very big one in November. And all the things that come with that, because it's not just one day people vote any longer. It's early voting, it's, you know, the absentees have grown, the districts have grown, everything has grown. And so I want to make sure, my office in particular is in a unique situation right now. I have seven vacancies in my office. By the end of the year, I will have nine. And so to send Christine the help that she deserves and needs during an election, any election, every election, is 10 to 20 folks from my office. That is not going to happen in January. She's going to get my supervisor that runs the, this stuff, if you will, that we take in into our vault and keep, you know, unless there's a contested race and one other person. I will not be able to send her 15 people to help her for that week that they have to confirm the votes. So I did want to bring that up. I just don't have and won't have the staff to do that. So she will be under, Christine can do 11 districts probably in her sleep, but it still takes manpower to do all the things that need to be done for an election. And I just think you all need to know that and what she will be under if the special election for the District 1 will happen. I just think that's important for you all to know, what she will be under. I just think that's important for you all to know, what she will be under, and her office will be undergoing during that timeframe. The second thing is, no one has mentioned, every time in Virginia, Jeff always says it's always when I'm out of town, not this time, but in every election that we have next year, there could be a recount. And that recount is very, it's, it takes a lot of people to do a recount, not just the citizens that serve Virginia Beach in the offices that we represent, but it takes a lot of the public to do that, and during a timeframe where it could be holidays. I mean, so that's also something that you need to know, that could possibly happen. I mean, everything could go great and smoothly. We don't have any recounts, but that's typically not my experience in the last few elections that I've, you know, that I've been involved in. So I think that at least needs to be said to you all. You know, it does matter to us, but it matters not if you make a decision, we're going to do what you ask us to do. I just need to tell you that the amount of pressure and overwhelmingness that our offices are going to be under to do that extra election.
When is the next, did you say the presidential primary was going to be the next election?
I believe it's March, March and June, and then, of course, November.
Okay. All right, you know, could I get some?
I'm in a unique situation right this very moment, and hopefully by the end of next year.
Yeah, but I'm glad you got up and spoke.
But at least, I need you to know that. And, because I know, I think Christine counts on us to be there to help, because it's a lot of physical labor, too, not just the getting the things that need to be taken in and protecting those things and the integrity of the ballot and the poll books and the machinery. I mean, it's all of that. But it takes a lot of man, physical manpower to do that. Election night, the week that we confirm the vote, it's all of that. And if she only has two people, when she's used to having 15 to 20, that's a difference. And so I just wanted to, I'm hoping I can send her as many, but I can't promise that today. If I had to give her an answer today, it would be she would get two in January.
Okay, let me just throw this out, but there would be a primary coming up in March that you can?
I believe so.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, with this, okay, let me toss this ball out, you know, going back to option two with the special election in March.
No, you can't have a special election.
Oh, yeah, not a primary? Okay, never mind.
Yeah.
Okay, folks, we have a dilemma here. Let's talk about it.
Michael? Mayor, I don't think it's a dilemma. And I completely respect and appreciate the position that you all are in. But it's the responsibility, just as Ms. Sinon said, it's the responsibility of those departments to execute an election if one is requested, and you have indicated that you would be able to do that.
And I'm not trying to sway either way, really not. I just think you need to have all the facts as they are today. I mean, I may be able to send her the same amount of people in January, but if it today was an answer, I would have to tell her no. I mean, I have nine people to hire and train, so that means nine people new, nine people off their regular jobs to train those nine people. My staff is going to be, we're going to be, it's going to be hard to do that, and then also help in the venue that we're used to helping in. I'm going to do everything I can to help, trust me, but I just thought you should know. I'm not trying to sway either way, I just think you should know all the facts.
Well, it's often hard to do our duty. It can be challenging to do our duty. But our duty is to allow the people to elect who represents them. That is our responsibility, that's our solemn duty, and I know that we'll get it done. Thank you.
Barbara?
What would be the timeframe for early voting and absentee voting?
For the January special? So it would be, early voting would begin 45 days prior to the election or soon thereafter. So we probably have about 40 days of early voting.
So that would start in November?
No, December. It'd be?
Okay, let's talk some more, folks. What do you think? Wirth?
I'm on the spot again, but I'm hearing that it's not possible to have a fair election in January? If that's the right term to use?
And the microphone, please.
I wouldn't say it's not, I just, I just don't know at this juncture today, having nine positions to hire for before the end of the year, some after the end of the year, but my staff is thin right now. And so, and that's from retirements mostly, folks that have had 20-plus years given to the city of Virginia Beach. But it is going to be a hardship, not just for Christine, but for me as well. But like Mr. Berlucchi said, we're going to make it happen, no matter what the decision is. So just need you all to know that it is going to be overwhelming irregardless, two or three. Makes it better that it's not a citywide, certainly, the district-wide makes it a little bit better.
Yes.
Can we walk through the timeline again? I'm sorry to do this. It's hard to keep track of.
Yeah. Considering the early voting, when people have to?
Folks, folks, could we?
When people have to get in their petitions, be certified, get on the ballot, and early voting, and can you walk through that timeline for me? What needs to happen when?
So our vault can be open December 6th. Our vault will have all the stuff from the November election contained in there. So the earliest we could start early voting is the week after, so it'd be the week of December 9th.
December 9th, mhm.
Hey, Chris?
So I know you said we were? Under special circumstances, when Councilman Holcomb was appointed, we couldn't have an election, or we couldn't have a special election, and it was?
We were enjoined by the federal court from having an election, yes.
So that was 15, well, August, roughly 15 months. The vacancy is going to be September 29th, so that would give us October, November, about 14 months. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to just think through this. We still haven't, and maybe Patrick and Attorney Mark, we still haven't sent anything to the Journal of Something to change our charter. So are we, aren't we still kind of in a special place? We haven't done those things, but we're going to have an election in a system that we don't have? And aren't we?
No, we have, you have adopted the redistricting ordinance. You are, you have chosen to pursue a 10-1, 10-district system. We will come back to you and ask to have the charter changed or general law changed to reflect what you've done with your redistricting ordinance. But the difference here is, there is not a federal court order that says you can't have an election, which is what we had back in the election you're referring to. So we can't have a special election in January for District One if that's the will of the body.
Under the 10-1 system?
Yes.
So, okay. So, and again, this is going out there because it's, this is a big conversation. So what, yes, there are several seats. I'm going to refrain from that. Thank you.
Anybody else at this point? Well, folks, we're a little bit of a crossroads here. You know, Tina, in the, you know, in the Board of Elections, you're pretty much stressed every election you have.
Yes.
She doesn't have enough staff, just so you know.
Yeah, but, you know, so even if we did have it at another time, we would probably be facing the same problem.
Maybe not with nine vacancies in the clerk's office.
No, but once again, even if you factor, of course, is there any potential to, you know, to hire, you know, 10 people that might be able to help out, at least with some of the logistical work or some of the busy work?
I think the answer is yes, Mayor Dyer, but I think you also run the risk of you don't have any experience there whatsoever. And being under the scrutiny that we are with every election anymore, you know, we're under the microscope, the media is always there to make sure we don't, you know, make a mistake, and you have folks that really care about what they're doing, I'll let you know that. They do care, they want to do it right. There's no underhandedness going on whatsoever. And so with that said, yes, every election is overwhelming sometimes, but next year is, it's three elections already. And I'm not saying that we couldn't do the district. I was really happy to see that they were going to follow the code with the sheriff's office.
If I could, you know, make a suggestion, you know, maybe sounding like, you know, the bad person in the conversation, you're having an election in November, okay? And then this one would be a couple of months after.
Right after.
Okay? But by then, you would have closed all the doors about any potential recounts and all that other stuff, correct?
So the recount would be, it has to be called within a certain amount of time?
Right.
And that usually we held recounts or audits in December, and we also have a potential of having an audit. So the Department of Elections will let localities know mid-December, I'm sorry, mid-November, who's going to be participating in the audit.
Right. But the thing is, then you have the election, if we had it in January, you would not have another election until when? Even though it might be a primary?
March. It's the presidential primary.
Yeah, okay. So there would be some gap time there. You know, I think what I'm trying to say is, there really ever going to be a good time for this?
We start voting for the presidential primary, the 19th of January.
Okay. Okay, Amelia, then, Josh?
I just wondered, you said quite a few are retiring.
Yes, Mayor.
So they already have lived experience, may be willing to serve for that short time for that election. That's a question.
I can ask.
Can I ask?
Certainly, I can ask, several of them, yes. There are several that haven't done it, but there are several that are retired that have.
Be some bonus to them, something, you know.
Yeah, I know. We appreciate your love. Josh, and then Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think moral of the story here is, you ladies are hiring, so if we're watching television, I'm sure it's a wonderful place to work, we just heard it's high stress, but I know, well, kidding aside, I'm trying to, again, hone in on that timeline. I heard January 9th is a, is a, is a potential election date. Backing up 60 days from there is when people would need their signatures and petitions filed, correct? So that is November 9. And then you mentioned early voting starting somewhere in the neighborhood of December 9. Is that?
Yep, the week of December 9.
Oh, right? Okay. And I know, and I'm not, I'm not by any means trying to minimize the fact or ignore the fact that you already have three elections going on next year, but that wasn't going to be any different. That was happening anyway. So we, I think through perhaps some creative solutions like Councilwoman Ross Hammond just mentioned, we, just one district, I think we should and can do this.
Anybody else, Chris? Okay, good to go. You know, I think, once again, you know, I think we're looking for a direction right now, correct? And, you know, my sense of it is that, you know, a good chunk of the majority of the body, you know, really feels that there should be a election given, you know, at the time, that would be necessary to serve. And, you know, but, and once again, I think, you know, sometimes you've got to make these, you know, decisions that are very, very uncomfortable. But the fact is that it is essential that we get the ball rolling and get Rocky replaced at, you know, with the best possible method, with the best possible public input possible, and realizing it may put an imposition on you. And, you know, but, but once again, you know, these are things that happen in government sometimes that are challenging, to say the less, but somehow necessary. Guess what? You folks always come through, don't you? You sure do. Okay. Yep, Mark, would you like to?
I just want to, I just want to make sure that I heard the direction. I think I've heard clearly that with respect to the sheriff's position, the special election would be November 2024.
That is correct.
And I think I've heard from the vast majority of council that they want to have a special election for District One on January 9, 2024. What I heard, a almost 50-50 split on, and I'm not clear about what the direction was, is on whether or not, while having the special election for the District One seat in January, you want to make an interim appointment by November 28 as well. So I don't know, I don't know whether we're?
Yeah, so the question is, is, you know, do we, do we point a placeholder for the couple of months? You know, two months, but, once again, if I can reiterate, and I think it's been said, you know, January, you know, we're only going to have, what, one or two meetings?
December's two meetings.
Two meetings in December, you know, and then, you know, November, and we're going to be in October pretty quick. And even by the time we go through the process, and don't forget, it's a multi-week process, where we put out, you know, call for volunteers, send in your resume, and then we kind of go over them, and we thin them down, and then we have the interviews. And then we also did add that extra step about the public engagement. So that would probably take the better part of, what, six weeks, maybe? I'm figuring plus or minus. So my recommendation would not be to do a placeholder at this time. Yeah, Amelia?
Maybe we can go around the table, option two, option three, and somebody do a head count. That way we'll know majority since we're in that 50-50.
Amelia, I think we've pretty much agreed on the election.
Right, no, I'm talking about?
Well, option two is, option two is appointment, option three is no appointment.
Right, so we go around and see, two, three, and you get past that 50-50.
Okay, do we want to do that? Okay?
You, Mayor.
Okay, Jennifer?
I'm leaning towards three, just for practicality. So if the timeline is, we get the applications, they sit in the seat for two meetings, it's a lot of effort.
Yeah.
I'm going with three.
Okay, Josh?
Sam, for me, three.
Sabrina?
Already mentioned three.
Great. Barbara?
I'm sorry, not having heard anything from the public, I would just have, I don't want to abstain. Public hearing on this issue.
Mrs. Henley, we make decisions.
I'm abstaining.
Okay, Wirth?
Option three, and we will, we will hear from the public, I believe. This will be an ordinance.
Right. Three. Michael?
Three.
Amelia?
Three.
Rosemary?
Three.
Three is happening. Okay. Thank you all for the discussion. This was very important, and thank you all for your patience and ability. Okay, any council comments or updates or anything? Rosemary?
Just at the airshow, fantastic, Igoric.
Oh, yeah.
It was incredible, those of you that got out there, and those of you didn't get out there, I'm sure you still saw the angels and other planes flying around. It was really amazing. And we talked to the CO, and on Saturday?
Folks, will you pay attention, please?
Saturday, 200,000 people came, and Sunday, another 100,000. So this festival, that didn't require anything except some end times support from us, brought in 300,000 people, which is pretty amazing. And it's incredible to me to see the power of, and people protecting us on a daily basis, and also to see all the young people in the uniforms. It just really, it gets you a thrill to see our military out there, and they're right here, and they are also located in District Five.
And if I could just do a, piggyback on that, I think a large kudos goes to the manager and our public safety folks. You know, the integration, when they have, when you have 300,000 people on a military installation in two days, and everything from traffic control to safety to, you name it, you know, EMS, fire, I mean, everybody, the coordination that, you know, this thing is months in the preparation stage. So, but once again, you know, we got a lot of kudos from the command staff at Oceana about how well the city really participated. Traffic was good, everything, and it looked like a bunch of folks having a great time. And if I could just, along the military thing, there was a group on Saturday called the Irreverent Warriors, and they are over 200 active-duty people from all over the country. This group has a following of 27. This group has a following of 27,000 people. And their mission, and they have it on their shirts, is to make awareness for the problem of active-duty military and retirees suicides. And so they're very big into the prevention, and they had a big walk-around, and, you know, I tell you what, it's really a point of pride to see these folks out doing that kind of thing. That helps define Virginia Beach. Anybody else? Michael, and then Amelia, and Barbara.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a few updates. Starting with, I just wanted to share with the body that next Tuesday, depending on what the schedule is, I'm probably going to be late. The city of Virginia Beach is actually the host to the Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association National Conference. And I have the honor of being one of the presenters of that conference, because I am a graduate of the Virginia Beach Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. In fact, not a lot of people know about me, but I graduated about 10 or 11 years ago. It's a great program, and I really encourage anyone who is interested in police community relations or the work that they do to consider joining that program. It's a great program, and so is the Alumni Association. And it's really wonderful that we're having the national conference here. I want to thank everyone who attended our District 3 community meeting last Thursday. It was a great success. We had a really, lots of really meaningful dialogue and presentations, and I especially want to thank all the citizens and all the professionals from the city who, both groups took time away from their families and their other responsibilities and their loved ones and their personal passions to be with us that night, because we all care about Virginia Beach and our neighborhood, and look forward to having more of those types of dialogues. On Saturday, there's also kind of a busy day, a couple of things I just want to raise awareness or give a shout-out to. The first one is the Bridge, the Gap Community Fest. This is going to be happening at Mount Trashmore on Saturday from 12 to 5. And really, the purpose of this, this community festival is about connecting law enforcement professionals, police department, sheriff's office, other public safety agencies with our community more fully. It's a recruiting initiative, but more than that, it's about community connectedness, and it's about building trust, respect, and understanding between community and also law enforcement professionals, and that's a very important topic. And I really applaud Pastor Bobby White and all of his partners for producing that festival for us. Also, in terms of hosting conferences, Virginia Beach is the host for the Virginia Association for Human Rights Conference, and that's going to be happening here on Saturday in Virginia Beach, and in partnership with our Human Rights Commission, and so I'm happy to welcome them. Lastly, I just want to, in keeping with our policy, provide an update that Councilmember Rouse and I have been working together to create a resolution that asks the city to engage in partnership and also raise awareness about native communities, indigenous communities and tribes in Virginia Beach, and as well, that creates a land acknowledgement, which is a statement that pays tribute to the traditional stewards of the land where we reside, native communities and tribes. We would be ahead of the curve, but I think it's an appropriate recognition for the communities of people who occupied this land before we did and continue to live here and contribute to life in our communities. So there are lots of ways we can raise awareness and provide services and support for indigenous and native communities, and we're just in the beginning phases of really creating that, but we want to let you know that we hope to bring a resolution forward that really authorizes the manager to begin that process with staff. And in keeping with the policy, I just wanted to share that, and we hope to do that so that we can vote on it before Indigenous Peoples' Day, which is, I believe, on October 10th. And I didn't know if Councilmember Rouse wanted to add anything to that.
Yeah, that's it, so it's early exploration, and it came out of conversation about visibility and awareness and making sure that as a city, we have native naming all over the place and symbols all over the place, but not as much understanding or awareness or recognition of the humans and the peoples and the stories behind it. So glad to be working on this and hopefully bringing more information as it develops.
Great, thank you. Barbara? Amelia?
Yes, I attended on a Saturday the Virginia Beach Volunteer Rescue Corps 80th Anniversary. Really good listing to how they started in 1942, establishing in 1943, and getting their first ambulance, which only cost $500 compared to what it costs now. And that this, you know, this group is the largest in the nation. All volunteers at no cost, so that's a call-out to people to donate to them. And two other elected officials were there, Senator Rildestaff and Attorney Tim Addison. They gave us lovely challenge coins, we had to go through the process of how to deliver it. So it was a really nice ceremony. And last year alone, they had 50,000 calls, just to give you a feel. And the other was in District 4, we had the Zim Shipping Corporation, and the mayor presented them.
Great time.
And they call themselves Zimmers, that's 70,000 square foot. So Mayor Dye was there, Vice Mayor, and myself. It was really nice doing a tour of their building, at least the fourth floor.
And they're very delighted to be here. Thank you, Barbara.
Last Tuesday, I expressed my concerns about the proposed rezoning application slated to be heard by the Planning Commission in October, which will seek rezoning to A18 for a partial that is, a parcel that is partially in the ITA. Even though the applicant is moving the residential units out of the ITA to have them wholly on the portion not in the ITA, this application will set a precedent for how similar properties that straddle the ITA line will be addressed. I believe that this will affect most, if not all, of the properties in the catcher's mitt on the ACU's map, which is not covered by ACU zones. Right now, it's just a no-man's land for zoning, and we seem to not acknowledge any restrictions to development, which I believe is a flawed position. City Attorney expressed to us that since our ordinance does not clearly address if the portion that is in the ITA can or cannot contribute density, he believes that it is allowed. He also did indicate that the city council might want to clarify the issue. I agree that we should stop at this point and clarify this extremely important question. It was anticipated, when the BRAC law was accepted, that there would be issues that had not been anticipated that would need to be addressed. And I'm going to quote from the ordinance adopted by city council on December 20th, 2005, which adopted the city's plan for compliance with the Base Realignment and Closure Commission's decision regarding Naval Air Station Oceana and related ordinances. Quote, "The city council recognizes that the execution of the BRAC compliance plan involves complex and difficult issues, and that not every potential circumstance could have been foreseen during the formulation of the plan. It is the expectation of the city council that amendments refining the plan and addressing unforeseen or newly arisen circumstances will be brought forward for its consideration. And to that end, the city manager and city attorney are hereby authorized and directed to bring forward, for the city council's consideration, proposed amendments to the plan whenever the same are necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of the plan," end quote. It's also important to acknowledge, as it was pointed out repeatedly during the 2005 ordinance considerations, that it is the city council and not the Navy that controls zoning. It is also clarified in this ordinance, which I have just quoted, and it was reinforced by comments made by the then commanding officer of NAS Oceana at the public hearing, that it is the Department of Defense Investigator General, not the Department of the Navy, that determines whether the city has complied with the conditions of the BRAC law. I cannot think of an issue before us that is more important than keeping our commitments to the BRAC law and in protecting Oceana's operation and mission as the master jet base. We must be fully aware of what our actions are approving, the future implications of those actions, and we must assure that those actions comply with our commitments to keeping the letter and intent of the BRAC law. We cannot simply do this by default, because we haven't taken the time and consideration to investigate the issue. As the district representative for this application, I'm asking that this application be on hold until we have considered the question of how properties that straddle the ITA and other ACU's lines will be considered. I also request that the appropriate representatives of the Department of Defense be consulted during our consideration.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Chris?
I have three comments. I want to, first, thank you, Mayor. Applaud Councilmember Luci and Rouse for the effort you're taking on indigenous peoples. My mother's side, they were full-blooded Indians, and we have, as some people say, the receipts, they were called black, but they were the first people colored to work in the Francis Land House, so I think it'll be important to work with historical society, because we attribute the Francis Land House as a historical home, not realizing that as early as 1913, there were non-blacks Indians working at the house free. And so I think that's something important, especially as, on some calendars, it's no longer indigenous or Columbus State, it's just a workday. And so that's an important thing. So good job to both of you for being considerate of that population. Second comment, I just want to give a big shout-out to our city workers, Public Works, Public Utilities, a couple of weeks ago, wife needed some new tires, dropped it off, and decided to walk back home in District 8 and saw some of the crews, and it was interesting talking with them, listening to why they work for our city. One gentleman had been with us 18 years and had just hit $50,000 in income, and I asked him, why does he stay? And he was a former student in Virginia Beach schools, and his family's here, and he said he's had plenty of opportunities to go somewhere else, but he loved our city. And so they're out there picking up trash, repairing roads, it's been hot, and so I just wanted to give them a shout-out to that crew. You know who you are, thank you for everything you're doing. And then last but not least, I had an opportunity today to meet with our fire chief of the Oceana Volunteer Fire Department, also spoke with Chief Pravitz, and you may be hearing something, I don't know how many people they've reached out to, but Wayne Richardson joined in 1977, he's, they've been asking for support, they are supporting the Virginia Beach Fire Department, they have an aging support truck. He indicated that previous council had given them $150,000 at, under the leadership, not of Jim Wood, but Jim Wood was very supportive of it. And he said that the pre-COVID volunteerism has shrunk, they're not seeing the same amount of volunteers. They have roughly $100,000 in commitments, $150,000 still from the monies that the previous council gave to them, but they're looking at 18 to 24 months out to replace their support unit at a cost of roughly $599,099. And I asked him directly, what are you looking for? And he said, right now, they're using a pickup truck from 2001 to support the fire department, and it's currently in the shop. And so I just wanted to make sure we understood that, as I believe Dr. Ross Hammond with the other volunteer, there are some needs, there's no commitments made, but they did bring that forth. So I just wanted to share that with the city and the public.
Very well said. Worth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In our weekend package, we've got the annual report, City Council from the 2040 Vision to Action Community Coalition. And my question to colleagues is, where does that stand now? It was a great initiative, I think, started in 2011, and I think the report summarizes where we are today. I don't know if we can decide today where that goes, but I think that's the point of the annual report, is what is the intent of this body on this, I think, important coalition?
Why don't we schedule that for a workshop chat?
Mr. Mayor, you want to say, invite them to give a presentation to the council?
What do you think, Worth?
As to liaisons, if you all, what you think, or if it's.
Worth it, I'll let it know.
Yeah, I think it would be worth, yeah. Let's do that. Okay, Josh?
Just real quickly, Mr. Mayor, and with deference and respect to the liaisons, I appreciate Councilmember Remick bringing this up, because I actually used to serve as vice chair of the PB 2040 Vision to Action Community Coalition. And I can tell you that things have changed since the 2012 version of 2040 considerably. And there are a lot of really wonderful people on that committee, and they're very, and they have been very enthused, energized around helping with city initiatives. I think we just need to let them know what it is we want them to do. And I know when I was in that spot, that's kind of what I wanted, was a little bit of, little bit of direction. And I know, I know the group did, and I did, and it was really enjoyable, participate with comprehensive plan outreach. But, you know, their time horizon, this 2040 group is a little longer than just a five-year, 10-year at a time. So as important as near-to-midterm planning is, I think we need to also focus on long-term planning, and we can do both at one time. So I believe they deserve the respect of either giving them a kind of repurposed, reshaped mission, or just doing away with the group and finding some other way to use the wonderful resources and those people that serve on that group.
Great, anybody else?
I think we should give them a repurpose, not throw them out, especially you've been on it before and singing the praises. So if we have that presentation, that will help us think of what direction to move next.
Good, anybody else? Sabrina?
Real quickly, I would like to say, first, last week, I had a community meeting about, that focuses on the Hampton Roads Recovery Resource Center, excuse me, and I also invited a member of staff to talk about our dilemma for recycling. And just want to say, the presentation by Ms. Rhines was very good. She made a topic in terms of recycling, very interesting, and lots of folks were, certainly in terms of feedback, were providing feedback. One of the areas that one of the residents mentioned, and I have to follow up on this, they mentioned something about helping remind people what's really required to be recycled that some people don't know. And it was something, the person suggested an example of, will it recycle? Perhaps something on our website that is educational and brings awareness in terms of what actually can be recycled and what is not required to be recycled. So I wanted to make a note of that and thank Ms. Rhines for her very, her very good presentation. And then also, real quickly, the Sunrise Festival is this weekend, certainly want to make sure people are aware of that and invite them out to attend. I also know that I saw correspondence regarding a dilemma that the Sunrise Festival is having, and perhaps we can have a more robust discussion about that dilemma and the future support for Sunrise Festival going forward. Thank you.
Just so you know, we will be discussing.
Good, thank you.
Barbara?
Just on the recycling, of course, it's printed on the blue can, what can be recycled in that blue can and what isn't. So, you know, all anybody has to do is read their blue can, and it says right there what is, because things can be recycled, but not by our vendor. So it's important that people realize that is what can be recycled through our project. But I believe this Saturday is also the Saturday that the.
Recycling.
The recycling of technology things is sponsored by the aquarium, as well as a number of other things, such as batteries and so forth. So anybody that wants to really participate can do that Saturday morning by getting in line at the aquarium and taking your stuff down there.
Good. Rocky, do you have some friends in town?
Yeah, we do, Mr. Mayor. We've got the Sheriff's Association in town.
We have the Sheriff's Association in town this week.
Yeah, you stopped by this morning.
Yeah, and I'll tell you what, it was great to see all the heroes there. It's amazing, and they had tremendous amount of exhibits with technology and everything. And, you know, just so you know, the Norfolk sheriff is really looking forward to working with Rocky. He really's got a lot of respect, so I think we're going to have a good, strong collaboration. Okay?
I do want to mention, I went over to see Rocky, see that new exciting culinary setup, and he gave me a tour, and another chef, met Stephen, who's been there 38 years. They put out, what, between 3,000 to 4,000 meals a day? It's a big operation, and the idea that he said, those who work within there, they have special uniforms, once they come out of the prison setup, so that they feel so important as helpers in there. Then later, they put back their jumpsuits. It was really nice, we got to see different bakers and very orderly. And when he walked in, he was already a shepherd. Thank you for taking, giving us that tour.
Okay, good. Thank you, everybody. I think we're ready for the consent now?
Yes. Before I start, I just wanted to mention the number 12 on that list, the Queens Training Center. We want to make sure that we thank our friends in the federal government, but also our state delegates. This is one of the first bills that delegate Anne Farrell-Tata carried, and with Barry Knight and the rest of the delegation, they helped get that extra money for us to make this a reality. So we want to give them a shout out. So looking at ordinances and resolutions, does anybody want to do anything there?
Yeah, Michael.
Mayor, I don't have anything to pull. I would like to make comments about number five and about number 12, and I would prefer to make those comments during the formal session, if that would be appropriate during the adoption of the consent.
We can let you do that. Sabrina, and then Chris.
So are there any speakers for number four, ordinance number four? No speakers. So I wanted to appeal to the mayor and vice mayor about this particular ordinance. Last week, I remember talking about, you know, if this ordinance was a draft and what we have more time to talk about it and discuss it. And I thought I said that, and I remember the response was affirmative in that, regarding that response. And so I wanted to make sure, and I went back and watched it again. And so I was quite surprised to see it on the agenda. I know we've talked a bit about it, but I think that because this ordinance will impact a very important part of our process going forward, I think we should take more time to discuss how it's going to impact that process. And, you know, in terms of changing it, you know, past history, I've seen changing the process with agendas, with our agenda, and then now changing this process, it's, from what I've seen, the experience has been restrictive. And so, you know, I hate for someone or an item to be restricted because they cannot get the necessary support or the necessary votes. I think we really should, and there were some suggestions made during one of our discussions to engage the folks at the General Assembly, our representatives there, and I think we should. And there were some other things that we talked about. I really thought we would be able to really engage, talk a bit more about this process. And so certainly would like to have the opportunity to do that because of this significance of that ordinance and how it would change our process. So those are my thoughts.
Jennifer, Barbara, thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor, and I concur with councilmember Wooten. We had a conversation earlier, so I was planning to vote no on item four. I understand the principle. I think in practice, it could cause unintentional, unintentional consequences, maybe, that weren't intended, but could be restrictive. Really important issues that maybe this body were able to articulate and collaborate in a way, but future councils may find a different balance of power in the application of this. It may cause problems going forward. So I would, I mean, I would rather we have more time to talk about it. I would prefer going through an agenda-setting process as we have been doing, as the body has been doing, and then maybe have a discussion after that to see if it's worth changing it, but I don't support voting for this tonight. So just wanted to support this.
Well, I was having similar concerns, and even the policy that we adopted maybe rather quickly, that requires three members of council to even get an item on this agenda, particularly now with the district situation. The district council member may call for something and may feel very strongly that something is needed for that person's district, but because they could not get three people, it will not even get to be on the council agenda for consideration. I think maybe that was hastily done and should be revisited. And so I think I'm probably also not in favor of this. I think, I think with this district situation, there are going to be districts that, I mean, situations that apply to a particular district that maybe don't apply to other districts. And, and so the district representative not being able to get an item even out for consideration could be one of those unintended consequences. And it could happen to any one of us, so.
I was going to pull number four. I'm in agreement, and it was, I don't necessarily agree hastily, but it was early on with the new people. And now being eight months in, you know, we're working fairly well together, but if there's a spad, if someone just doesn't want to support for whatever reason, that's an unintended consequence. So not only, I don't support voting on number four tonight, and I also would like to revisit the ordinance or resolution that we voted on earlier, so.
Okay, anybody else on this? Brother Mary?
We talked about how often the delegation don't want to support some of our legislative package. So we had Anthony Damon go back the last five years of everything that we requested, how many they would actually pick up to turn into a bill. And it's kind of interesting. In '23, we requested 11, they picked up six. In '22, we pressed 11, they picked up six. In '21, they requested 14, they picked up seven. In '20, they picked, we requested 17, and they picked up 10. In '19, they, we requested 17, and they picked up 10. So out of those five years, we requested 70 different legislative asks, and only 39 got sponsored, which means it's about a 56% rate. So it's, I think it is important that we make sure what we put forward are ones that we really, truly, truly want. And we talked about whether to do this tonight or not, but because the package is coming on so quickly, we thought it was best to go ahead and have the policy before the package even comes to us, so that we don't, we can do it without seeing what's on there and do it in a very neutral type of way. So, I mean, I can see if you want to vote against it, but I'd prefer for us to go ahead and put forward tonight.
Yes, and then Michael.
So
Jen.
We had a conversation.
We had a conversation. Jessica Abbott used to sit in that seat, and I just had vision, so once again, apologies.
Yes.
So I'm thinking about the General Assembly, I think councilmember Taylor brought it up, maybe at our last conversation about it, that there might be a cultural norm for preferring a majority, but it's not through code or through policy. And I think that's where the relationship between local and state elections matter in terms of representation and what values are in the General Assembly. I was talking with my husband about it, who's now in the General Assembly, Senator Aaron Rouse, and he said, people pick up whatever they want to pick up. And so if you're elected in office, that, you know, he was like, someone's going to look at the package and they're going to pick up what they want to pick up out of it. So I think we should put forward whatever we want to put forward, and then the General Assembly will pick up what they pick up. But at least we've done our part for the citizens of Virginia Beach to say, here's a comprehensive lens from the districts, from different perspectives about what's desired, and then the General Assembly will do what they will do, but we, at least we've done our part. And I think that's up for the General Assembly to, you know, their own values, but if there's a patron for a bill, they see something they want, they'll pick it up.
Michael?
Well, Mayor, I'd be happy to make comments, but my preference would be in the sake of time, I think we have some items on closed session that we just go ahead and pull this, and we could debate it out there, but if we want to debate it right now, I'm happy to make some comments. Your call.
Okay. Should we pull it and talk about it?
That's what I think we should do.
Or, I tell you what, because I'm getting a mixed reaction from, you know, the council and everything, and I'm just wondering if it might be, you know, deferred. You know, because, you know, if we have enough council members that feel that they, you know, there are some, you know, you know, issues with this, you have to respect when a number of people say, hey, listen, they're not saying no, they're going to say, what we're saying is, let's talk about it a little farther.
Well, Mayor, since you're talking about a deferral, then I'd like to say a few words.
Sure.
I hear and respect the perspectives shared by members of talking about unintended But I think the policy that's consistent with our, our other policy to add something to the agenda is fair. And the reason that I think is fair is because two things. One is, requires three members to place something on the agenda or the mayor. So if you can't get three, you can appeal to the mayor, and Mayor, I have found you to be incredibly deferential when someone wants to have something heard. I can't think of an example where you haven't granted that opportunity to someone. The other thing is, so if you can't get three, or at least you can't get yourself and the mayor, you're not going to get it passed. You have to get to six to get it passed in almost every case.
And Michael, I do respect you, but once again, we do got to get to close, and we did. If we defer, we're going to talk about it, and, you know, certainly at length would be, I think, more appropriate time.
Rather than defer it.
Right, let's just talk about it outside. I think the reason I'm expressing my perspective, Mayor, is because since you, which is your prerogative, expressed a position on it, that we defer it, then I wanted to share my position. So if you'd rather we wait and discuss it out there, then I will be happy to do so.
What's the pleasure of counsel on this?
I concur.
Pardon?
I like to just pull it, Mayor, which is, and then we can make a motion to defer or not to defer, to accept or not to accept at that time.
Since it's on the agenda, we never know, let's at least pull it and talk about it out there. I think that's the way to go.
My vote would be to defer it, because even the information that vice mayor brought up about what the feedback was from the General Assembly, I'm hearing that for the first time. Like, if that is a reason why we're doing this, I think it would be appropriate to have that discussion and that information in a background history of that concern, so that we can make a better decision. Because what I'm, what I saw was particularly one person saying we need to make a change, and then next thing you know, we're making a change, but we haven't really discussed why and what warrants that change. And we need to have a discussion about something that could potentially restrict legislative items going to the General Assembly and how we represent residents that have elected us.
Sorry, Mayor, if we're going to continue to talk, I'd like to finish the opportunity to finish my thought.
At this point, yes.
But my preference would be to pull it. So if we can, if we're going to continue to express point of view, then I'd like to finish my thought, if the body doesn't mind. Otherwise, let's stop talking and let's hear it out there. Would that be okay, Mayor?
Would it be okay if we heard it out there? And then we can make a decision whether to defer it or not later.
Let's pull it.
Yeah, let's pull it. Okay.
All right, moving on to planning. We have speakers on the floor.
Okay, number four.
Do you want to pull it? You just have a comment.
No, I'd like to make a comment on five and 12. Does not to be pulled.
We're just pulling four for now.
I had five to pull.
You want five pulled?
Yes. Okay. Anything else?
Anything else on ordinance resolutions?
Okay, now, moving on to planning.
Moving on to planning.
Number one, we need to pull their speakers on the microphone. Number two, Lynette Ball, which is District One.
No objection.
Number three, Kids Adventure, District One.
No objection.
Unless she rocks it.
Yeah. It's a neat thing in all over the city.
Four, Speed Gears.
We actually have opposition now, and
Oh, really?
They just let me know, just about five minutes ago.
How many do we have?
One opposed and one赞成.
Number five, London Bridge Development.
Like to pull or have comments that I can defer to the council member, but I'd like to discuss.
Well, I mean, do you want to?
I don't want to vote in it, and I don't want to vote in consent, I'd like to.
I mean, can we put on consent, and you can make your comments on it?
We'll give you time for comments. Okay?
Is that okay?
Yes.
I mean, did you want to consent, Worth?
Yes, if that's the will of the body.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Number six, Francis Robbins, District Five, that's consent. Number seven, Jim Lutz, District Five, consent. Number eight, Ascensions, District Six.
I'd like to pull that. I know two weeks ago, I said early on that I would oppose S D Rs, and then I changed my mind and died, so if they want to speak to this, they can speak. But right now, I'd like to pull it and have them speak, and if they don't speak, then I'm going to move to deny it.
And number nine, intend their speakers.
Okay, moving on. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions with open meetings allowed by section 3711A Code of Virginia, as amended for the following purposes. Public contract, discussion or award of public contracts involving the expenditure of public funds and discussions of terms of the scope of such contract, where the discussions in open session would adversely affect the bargaining positions or negotiating strategy of the body pursuant to section 2.23711a29. Number one, future-based design, and second, sunrise music festival. And then personal matters, discussions, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disbanding, resignation of specific public officers, appointees, employees of public bodies pursuant to section 2.33711a1, which is a council appointments, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees to have a motion.
Salute. Second?
Way to go.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, we are reaching the center.